Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
The meeting will please come to order. Just before we have our opening prayer, just want to remind everyone, for public comment, there is a Google signup link in the chat for those who would like to speak. Public comment will take place after all non-legislative business. This time, we'll have the opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be the key in all our endeavors. Amen.
At this time, we will have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby.
Present.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy.
There.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Here.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Present.
Councilman Spadola.
Here.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
President Congo.
Here.
Thirteen present.
Reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
February 4th, 2021, City Council met in virtual regal session and you vote. Date as 3 p.m., President Ernest M. Congo's second presiding. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, deputy clerk. The pledge of allegiance was recited by City Council. The following members responded to the call of the roll. Councilmembers Gray, Darby, Oliver, Harley, B. Fields, McCoy, Johnson, Enfield, Cabrera, Dixon, Spadola, and Walsh, and Council President Congo, with thirteen in attendance.
Second.
It's been properly moved, second that the ministry accepted as written on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports.
February 8th, 2021, present members of Council City Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we your Finance and Economic Development Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred, ordinance number 21003 in title. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond series of 2021 SRF in order to provide the funds necessary for capital projects of the city of Wilmington relating to the city's 15th and Walnut Street Combined Sewer Overflow Separation Project, providing for the sale of the 2021 bond to the Delible Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend council vote on it accordingly. Those members present. Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Harley, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilman Spadola, and President Congo.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second that the reports we receive, recorded and filed on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
February 8th, 2021, present members of Council City Wilmington, we your Finance and Economic Development Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred, ordinance number 21004 in title. An ordinance authorizing a proven agreement between the city of Wilmington and the Laro Corporation for onsite engineering services for the WITN-TV station. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend council vote on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present to the Finance and Economic Development Committee, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Harley, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilman Spadola, and President Congo.
I move that committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second that the report we receive, recorded, and filed on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
February 8th, 2021, we your Finance and Economic Development Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred, ordinance number 21005 in title. An ordinance constituting amendment number two to the fiscal year 2021 operating budget being an ordinance to amend substitute number one to ordinance number 20016. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend council vote on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members of the Finance and Economic Development Committee that were present, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Harley, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilman Spadola, and President Congo.
It's been properly moved, the second that the report we receive, recorded, and filed.
That's amended.
I'll make a motion that the committee, I'm sorry, that the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
It's been properly moved, then, second that the committee report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Two more committee reports, Mr. President. February 10th, 2021, we your Education, Youth, and Families Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred, ordinance number 21002 in title. An ordinance to authorize and approve contract 21023 PR between the city of Wilmington and Food Management Services, Inc., trading as Linton's Service Management for the Child and Adult Care Food Program. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend council vote on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present. Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Gray, Councilwoman Darby, Councilwoman Fields, and President Congo.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second that the report be recorded and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
February 11th, 2021, we your Community Development and Urban Planning Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred, ordinance number 21006 in title. An ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the city code to revise certain enforcement provisions and provide civil fines for owners of rental properties. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend council vote on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present. Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilman Field, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Fields, Councilman Spadola, Councilwoman Darby, and President Congo.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second that the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
That's all the committee reports, Councilman.
Thank you. May we please have the city treasurer's report.
February 18th, 2021. Total investment: $474,470,250.13. Total cash on hand: $15,695,859.76. Rand total: $490,166,109.89. Dwayne Sims, city treasurer.
I move the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second that the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. I'll accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
Motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second that we accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, we do have a a few sympathy resolutions that I want to mention. First is Walter F. Miller. That is coming from Councilmember Oliver. Also coming from Councilmember Oliver, a sympathy resolution for Ms. Tenazia Rollins Townsend. Also coming from Councilmember Oliver, sympathy resolution for Benjamin V. Bartley and Vera Mary. And coming from Councilmember Walsh, a sympathy resolution for Joan Hare. And also, all of Council would like to again recognize February as Black History Month. We just want to remind everyone to please support, make a greater effort, an even greater effort to support black businesses during the month of February. And I do think that we have a few resolutions for individuals and groups to be recognized. I'm going to call Councilmember Oliver to come first, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you allowing me to go first because the Deltas, we have lost one of our sisters and they have their hold in the funeral tonight at seven o'clock. So if anyone has any comments, please keep them short, since I know everybody's going to be off this call after this. And with that being said, I'm expiation for this resolution. And first, I'd like to thank Sister Crystal Bostic and Charlotte Barnes for assisting me with this help, okay? Whereas Wilmington City Council wishes to recognize the historic importance and impact work of the Women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., broadly in the Wilmington Alumni Chapter specifically. Whereas Ethel Cuff Black was born in Wilmington, Delaware, in 1890 and later became one of the founders of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. In January 1913, she served as the first vice president in the sorority. Whereas Rama Omega Sigma Graduate Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., DSD, was chartered on March the 6th in 1949 in Wilmington, Delaware. The chapter was renamed the Wilmington DE Alumni Chapter following the 1954 National Conference, Convention. Whereas the Women of Delta Sigma Theta distributed over $50,000 in scholarship funds in one single year in 2020 to high school students, adult learners in the Delaware in support of education and development. And whereas these dedicated women were able to successfully service the community in physical spaces, offering services virtually during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas achievements, some of the achievements of the Wilmington Alumni Chapter over the past year also included young entrepreneur programs for high school, Boys and Girls Club, food distributions for frontline workers at Wilmington Christiana Care, St. Francis Hospital in partnership with Zoo Restaurant. They empowered, they have empowered Strong Minds and Healthy Heart Mental Health Conferences online, helped previously at Baynard School. Coronavirus Town Hall Meeting Series covering health educations for the vulnerable population. Economic impact donations for North Enterprise Turkey Drive in Wilmington and the partnerships with Newcastle County National Council. Whereas City Council commends the Women of Delta Sigma Theta, Inc. and Wilmington Alumni Chapter for 72 years of service of the Greater Wilmington area during the celebration of Black History Month in February. We salute you all. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that the Council is pleased to commend the Women of the Wilmington Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, Inc. for the outstanding commitment and dedication of service they provided to the local community. Congratulations. And with that being said, we do have the President. I think Miss Stephanie Tolan is on the line, because she just say a few words.
Thank you, Soror Oliver. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Thank you to the entire City Council and the city of Wilmington for recognizing the work and dedication and love that the Women of the Wilmington Alumni Chapter have for Newcastle County in general and Wilmington specifically. On behalf of the 300 members, current members of Wilmington Alumni Chapter, I thank you, thank you, and thank you.
And I thank you, and my heart goes out to you, because I know you and Sister Mary were very, very close. With that being said, if someone, I think Sister Darby, would you like to say something, Soror?
Yes, so I didn't know our Soror or Mary. I don't think I met her, but I do send my condolences and I am a part of the chapter and I thank you guys for the work that you do in the community. And I'm here for whatever you guys need. So it's good seeing you, Soror President, and you guys have a good day.
Thank you, Soror Darby, and thank you, Soror Oliver.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
You have a good one. Thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you, Mr. President. And that will be all for me, because other recognition for the 100 black women will not be tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Before I read my resolution in honor of Black History Month, I just want to say, as we all know, during the month of February, Americans celebrate Black History Month to acknowledge the black men and women who have made a difference by helping to shape this country and its values and who continue to inspire and fight for us to be better. We acknowledge that in a world where both conscious and unconscious biases are still the reality, sometimes it's almost impossible to see, or to be rather, what we can't see. So when our daughters have women to look up to who look like them, they're motivated to aspire for more and to make their success the new reality. So during this Black History Month, as it winds down, I wanted to share something special with you to celebrate and acknowledge the first African-American women elected in their position in Delaware's history. These are women who have made our local communities and our state what it is today and should be applauded, commended, and celebrated for their service. So at this time, I will read my resolution. The sponsor is yours truly, Michelle Harley. Whereas Wilmington City Council is proud to recognize and pay tribute to the women of high purpose and worthy accomplishment whose endeavors have advanced the rights of women, black Americans, and Delawareans. And whereas the city of Wilmington, Delaware, has been a historic site of change and progress, contributing to generations of leaders and positive change. And whereas the month of February is recognized as Black History Month nationally in the state of Delaware and within the city of Wilmington, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this legislative body recognizes and commends the historic and notable work of the following first black American female elected officials in the state of Delaware. So in 1967, Councilmember Hattie Fallon. Next. In 1970, State Representative Henrietta Johnson. In 1994, the Mayor of Milton, Reverend Grace Batten. In 1994, Senator Margaret Rose Henry. 2016, Wilmington City Council President Hanifa Shabazz. 2016, Wilmington City Treasurer Velda Jones Potter. 2016, last but certainly not least, our current illustrious Congresswoman Lisa Blunt Rochester. So again, in the spirit and in honor of Black History Month, I wanted to recognize the black American first elected females in the state of Delaware. Thank you for their service. That's all I have, Council President.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Harley. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you very much, Council President. I had
I have a resolution to present. I am the sponsor and is to recognize Do More 24. The, whereas it is a sentence of City Council to honor organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Whereas Delaware will host its largest day of online giving with Do More 24 Delaware. The online giving is for 24 hours starting at 6:00 PM on Thursday, March 4th and ending on Friday, March 5th. Whereas hundreds of nonprofits and their supporters will raise funds and awareness as part of Do More 24 Delaware. And the event is organized by the United Way of Delaware and Spur Impact. This 24-hour day of giving is designed to help nonprofits raise money and engage new donors. And whereas the impact from Do More 24 Delaware Funding Campaign provides tremendous support to struggling nonprofits throughout the state. There are a limited number of foundations that our local community has direct access to for grant funds. And whereas with the COVID-19 pandemic and thousands of children and families are still struggling, it's imperative that nonprofits are supported so they can continue to help our local communities. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this Council is pleased to commend Do More 24 Delaware in a partnership with the United Way of Delaware and Spur Impact. Thank you. And before I pass it off to the Spur Impact Director, Charlie Vincent, I just want to say, many of you may not know this about me, but I am one of the family board members of Spur Impact. And it's, I don't really even, you know, discuss it all the time, but it's one of the things I'm most proud of. The amount of tremendous giving back to Delaware, which we've been instrumental on in the past few years. And in fact, last year's Giving Day, over $400,000 was raised in a single day. So it's a tremendous accomplishment. The organizations involved have gained national prominence. And we're just continuing to grow the work. And even during COVID, funds are tight. So, you know, the nonprofits on the ground are tremendously helped by this day. It connects government, it connects nonprofits. It's really a truly special day. So please come out, also believe, I don't want to steal Charlie's thunder, but there's going to be like a secret concert or something. So Charlie can give you that information. But yes, I will pass on to Do More 24, I guess, co-lead Charlie Vincent. Are you there, Charlie?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Take it away.
Well, thank you, Councilman Johnson, and thank you, President Congo and members of the Council. I appreciate your time and for recognition and for the resolution and for your support. My name is Charlie Vincent, and as some of you know, as Chris mentioned, I'm the Executive Director of Spur Impact. Our nonprofit focuses on young professional development engagement here in the city and throughout the state. And, and one of our biggest initiatives, as well as many of you know, is the Mill Summit Conference. And I know many of you have attended or supported that in the past. Thank you for that as well. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Spur Impact and United Way of Delaware, who the, our two organizations work together to put together the annual Delaware Giving Day, Do More 24 Delaware, which is coming up in two weeks on March 4th and 5th. As Councilman Johnson mentioned, it's a 24-hour day of giving. Think of it like a fundraising marathon, and every Delaware nonprofit's invited. As of tonight, we have more than 325 nonprofits signed up, including 191 who have offices in the City of Wilmington. And as Chris mentioned, last year, we raised nearly $400,000 in 24 hours, which is impressive to say the least. And hopefully this year we'll raise a little more than that and maybe double or more of that. So we have a lot of corporate and foundation and private support behind it. And as I mentioned, there's pretty much every nonprofit in the state participates. So again, thank you for your support. And as, as Councilman Johnson mentioned, there's also a benefit concert that'll air that night, and it's going to feature Delaware native and Sussex County-born country music singer Jimmy Allen. So he's going to be supporting the day by putting on a benefit concert. And more details can be found about that on our website. So on behalf of the boards of Spur Impact and the United Way of Delaware and of the entire Do More 24 planning team, thank you again for all your support for this year's Do More 24 Delaware Giving Day.
Thank you, Charlie. And Jimmy Allen's a country artist, but I'm not a huge country fan, but I love his music. He's from Delaware, so please come out. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Do you have anything else for this evening?
I have no further item. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. And I believe that is everything for all non-legislative business. I want to make sure I didn't pass over anyone. And if I did not, at this time, we will go to public comment. I want to thank those who have signed up to make public comment. We really appreciate your engagement. Just a friendly reminder that there is a Google form signup link in the chat for those who would like to speak. And the time limit is, is three minutes. And when you have 30 seconds left, I will remind you of that time. Please direct your comments to, only to, to me. Again, you will have three minutes. First, we have Mr. Kevin. And please forgive me for the pronunciation of your last name, Kevin Beeks.
Yes, Bojay.
Bojay. I apologize. Thank you. Kevin Bojay, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. So the President of the United States has recently laid out a pretty grand vision of what he wants to do in terms of electric vehicles. So he's announced a few different things. One is electrifying the entire fleet of the federal vehicles. Also tax credits for electric vehicles and electric vehicle charging stations, and then also building out a network of 500,000 electric vehicle chargers. But if you look at what's going on in the City of Wilmington, we're seeing a very clear dearth of electric vehicle infrastructure. So I did a little research on my own, and I found that there are four chargers operated by ChargePoint with 13 total spots. And then one is operated by Blink with three spots. So if we do the quick math here, we have a population of Wilmington which is over 70,000, but there's only 16 spots for people to charge their electric vehicles. So with my time here today, I'd like to call on you, Mr. President, to lead the City Council in building out more green infrastructure in the City of Wilmington. So I have two potential ideas for the City Council to consider. One would be a public-private partnership with vendors to build out these charging stations. So for example, when I park my car in downtown, I use an app, Park Mobile. So why not just find another vendor to build out these stations? And the city can collect revenue that way. Another way would be to offer some sort of tax credits or other incentives for office buildings and parking garages in the city to build out their own charging stations. I know that in, in the downtown area where I work, there are, just seem to be dozens and dozens of parking lots and parking garages. But again, a shocking lack of this electric vehicle charging stations. So to, to conclude my remarks here tonight, we need to act now, and we can't just wait for the federal government to provide these charging stations. Because as we know, the federal government works at a snail's pace. It could be years and years before these things get done. So please consider building out this infrastructure. The time to act on climate change is now, not tomorrow, not the next week or the next month. The time to act is now. Let's make a cleaner, greener, cleaner planet. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Did you leave your contact information and the, and the link? Kevin, are you still there?
Yeah, he's gone.
Is he? Okay.
Yes, I, I put it in the Google Doc.
Did you? Okay. All right, well, I'll make sure that our staff reaches back out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jason Souter. Jason Souter, are you still with us? I'll see him on the attendees. Okay, if he, if he comes back, we'll circle back. Next, we have Mr. Lawrence Larry Smith.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, Council President Congo. I'm here to support ordinance 121. The legislation establishes Lice LNI to enforce the Housing Code on rental properties through a civil system versus the current criminal system. The second comment I want to make is landlords must fix the code violations at their properties within a reasonable period or face fines that will be assessed more rapidly than under the current system. The third comment is tenants will no longer have to wait as much as 12 months for landlords to fix housing violations. The fourth comment I want to make is this ordinance does not apply to properties of homeowners or those properties that are vacant. I will, in closing, I would just want to say the revised ordinance creates needed pressure on landlords, on landlords to fix property code violations. Thank you, Council President and the sponsors of this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for your continued engagement in our, with our city. Next, we have Mr. Richard Gessner.
Good evening, Council President. My name's Richard Gessner. I'm a resident of the 8th District, and I currently serve as the Chairman of the Wilmington Neighborhood Conservancy Land Bank and as Chairman of Secret Card Housing, which is the affordable housing arm of the Ministry of Caring. I'm a past Chairman of both Habitat for Humanity of Newcastle County and Interfaith Community Housing. I also am a landlord in the city. My partners and I own approximately 100 apartments located on Market Street. I'd like to strongly support the Housing Reform Legislation. It's a great first step in improving affordable housing throughout the City of Wilmington. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Gessner. And next, we have Sarah Ryan.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to consider my comments on the Amendment to Chapter 34 of the City Code to revise enforcement provisions for owners of rental properties. My name is Sarah Ryan. I'm the Policy Director at Housing Alliance Delaware. Housing Alliance Delaware is a statewide nonprofit whose mission is to serve Delawareans by advancing housing opportunities, ending homelessness, and promoting vibrant communities. First, I want to thank the City Council and the President for taking the time to consider the important issues of safe and affordable housing. I know that you're working to ensure that Wilmington has healthy communities, and I thank you for your critical work. Second, I want to highlight that the COVID crisis has demonstrated that access to safe, affordable housing is a universal need. The health effects of the COVID virus have devastated low and moderate income families and communities. These communities have faced a higher incidence of illness and have struggled to maintain stable housing, employment, access to food, schooling, and childcare. Any bill that puts additional barriers into place for renters in Wilmington or does not allow renters to remain stably housed, we would consider problematic. The work of the Homes Campaign is trying to mitigate the impact of the housing crisis on the residents of Wilmington. And the Homes Campaign understands the devastation that can be caused by the displacement of tenants or that can be caused by barriers to housing. The Homes Campaign has proposed amendments to this bill that will reduce harm to tenants and maximize compliance of landlords. The Housing Alliance Delaware stands with the Homes Campaign and their amendments, and we commend the Homes Campaign for giving voice to the community. We understand that Wilmington must not ignore the current housing crisis. It must prepare for the future by passing thoughtful legislation. However, any bill that threatens housing stability should be reconsidered. Housing Alliance Delaware asks that you further consider the proposed amendments by the Homes Campaign. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah Ryan. Next, we have Kathleen Patterson.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Patterson, and I am a resident of the 2nd District here in the City of Wilmington. I was commenting on the Housing Reform Legislation that will be voted on tonight. The, the amendments to Chapter 34 that will make changes to the, the structure of for landlords in addressing fixing code violations. I am in favor of this this, this legislation. I feel that it will be a good step forward in changing our housing code and will help to get code violations, in particular the serious code violations that affect people's housing, rectified in a, in a timely fashion. And I urge the Council to sue, to vote yes on this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Patterson, and again, thank you for your continued involvement in our city. I do want to remind everyone to please mute your phones if you are not speaking. Thank you. Next, we have Tony Sarzega.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Council, and thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on the Amendments to Chapter 34 of the City Code. I'm a staff attorney with Community Legal Aid Society's Housing Unit, and I'm the co-chair of the Delaware Continuum of Cares Advocacy and Policy Committee. Classy and the COC are dedicated to fighting for housing justice for all Delawareans. And we strongly support the Homes Campaign and its proposed amendments to the bill and its comprehensive plan to address Wilmington's housing crisis. As currently proposed, this bill has the potential unintended consequences to displace, harm, and destabilize Wilmington's neighborhoods. Too many Wilmington residents are already facing precarious housing situations. And in light of our ongoing public health crisis, we must find solutions to alleviate our neighbors' problems, not potentially compound them. There's obvious agreement that bad landlords need to be held accountable, but we must do so in a way that provides as much protection as possible against tenant displacement. The risk of displacement, especially during a pandemic, is too great to move forward with this dramatic change to the City Code. We all want safe, habitable, and healthy housing in our community. We all want to hold bad landlords accountable, and especially, we all want to keep our neighbors in their homes. The Homes Campaign has worked on a comprehensive housing agenda to achieve these goals, and that is how we achieve housing justice in the city. Displacement or relocation is only briefly mentioned in a whereas clause in the amended bill. We simply do not know how this bill will affect tenants if landlords find that the timelines to make repairs are too short and the fines are too expensive. They might choose to walk away from their properties instead of fixing them up. And if that happens, we will see increased evictions. For landlords who, for, excuse me, for landlords who do make the necessary repairs, it's likely the cost will eventually trickle down to tenants, potentially pricing them out of their homes. We're living in a city with an affordable housing crisis, and the change to the code may unintentionally leave our neighbors with nowhere to go. We encourage Council to strongly consider the unintended consequences this bill poses and the risks that it poses to our neighbors and to continue to work with and hear the Homes Campaign and its housing justice agenda. Thank you for your time and for all of your dedications to achieving housing justice for, for all residents of Wilmington. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tony. Next, we have Alvin Hughes. Your phones if you are not speaking. Mr., on your phones or computers, Mr. Alvin Hughes, please.
Yes, hi, as you said, thank you, Council President and Councilmembers for accepting my comments. I am in full support of this bill. I live in Councilmatty, District 4. I'm the Vice President of Trinity Vicinity Neighborhood Association. And I think this is a great first step for our housing problems in, in the City of Wilmington, particularly all of those who are rentals. And I think it's particularly important now because of the pandemic. Now, we, with those persons who are going through some difficult times here, and you want them to at least be able and you want them to at least be able to have a place that they can reside in that's up to code, whether it's heating, whether it's broken windows, whether there's any of those kinds of violations. And basically, what the city is attempting to do through LNI is to ensure that those people have comfortable, affording, safe housing to rent. And I don't think it's, it's much, too much of a stretch to ask those who own those properties to maintain them. Now, I understand we're all under some financial stress, but that's just part of the business. If your margins are, are that too tight and to spread misinformation, and that's going to put people out of their rental property because you're not going to fix the property up, you may should consider another line of business. Thank you so much for supporting this bill and passing it. I think it's truly needed. I would like to see an additional step to include the bill to add amendments also to, to vacant properties as well as those homeowner-occupant properties as well. Thank you so much for your time, and I thank all those who supported this bill, the sponsors, as well as the, those who support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Next, we have Tiffany Taylor. Tiffany Taylor, are you still with us? I don't see her name in the participants list anymore. Tiffany Taylor? I also don't see Mr. Jason Souter. We'll go to Ernesta Corsi. Ernesta Corsi? Ernesto Corsi, are you still with us? And one more time for Tiffany Taylor. All right, again, I want to thank everyone.
President, Tiffany Taylor is here. Trying to get her mic to work.
Okay, all right. In the meantime, I do see that Wesley Smith Jr. has raised his hand to speak. So, Mr. Smith?
How are you tonight, President Congo?
Good. How you doing?
All right, all right. Thank you.
Thanks for joining.
I'll, I'll keep it short. I spoke last time. I'm also a landlord in the city of Wilmington, and once again, just as the gentleman from Trinity Vicinity said, I am in support of the legislation. Let's be clear again that we do profit off of these properties, and therefore, there are a lot of landlords who've been in this business a long time, and refusing to fix up your property is just negligent, it's heinous, it's just downright wrong. And Wilmingtonans, these are our fellow, these are fellow brethren, and we need to do a better job making sure that all of our properties are maintained, including mine. So, I'm in full support of the, of the legislation, and shame on those individuals who feel that they want to get more time to be able to sugarcoat or go around the, being able to go around the system and not being checked, okay? We do profit off of these, and we need to, and we need to make sure that we are constantly, constantly doing the best job that we can to maintain our properties. I'm over here in the 5th District and, you know, in Councilwoman Fields District, and, you know, we, you know, we're trying to do our best to make sure that things are being kept up, and I hold myself to that, to that same level of accountability. That's all I want to say. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I do see your hand up, Dr. Tracy McNair. But just before we go to you, I want to see if Tiffany Taylor is ready for us yet. If not, we will go to Dr. Tracy McNair. Okay, Dr. McNair.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am in the 5th District as well, and I am in favor of this legislation. Just like I said prior, accountability, responsibility, and social responsibility is the key to this legislation, and it is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McNair. Tiffany, Ms. Taylor, I do see your picture. Just want to know if you, if your mic is working. Tiffany Taylor? On WITN, were we able to assist Ms. Taylor?
Her mic is still out right now.
Okay. All right, so unfortunately, we will have to, let me see anyone else.
Be able to call in?
Councilmember Carrera?
I'm sorry, I didn't ask for permission to speak. Said maybe could you call in, the number that they have to call in versus trying to use the mic on her phone or her computer?
WITN, is that a, is that, is that possible?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be on the, the agenda, the phone number.
Are we able to get that to her?
Standby, please.
Councilmember Harley?
Yes, Council President, there's a possibility she didn't connect with the audio. When we connect via Zoom, you have those two options, so I just wanted to share that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Her, her audio is connected, just her mic's not working. We're going to try to get her to call in.
Okay. Mr. Smith, I see your hand raised. Is that, do you have additional comments?
Yes, I have just one other comment, and it's more of a question. And as far as, just for landlords, just as far as landlords are concerned, would it be possible at some point to be able to create some sort of boot camp for landlords to, to be able to, to have what, have the city's vision aligned with our ability to be able to, to rent property in the city? Because it seems like everybody's kind of like doing a separate, their own thing, and, and, you know, and as that keeps going on, it's impacting our city in a negative way. So, you know, perhaps maybe we could look towards a direction of having, having boot camps of sort, just so that we are, as landlords, we're in, in alliance with the, with the city. I mean, it shouldn't be a tall ask for us to provide proper housing and making sure that we're looking out for our tenants, but unfortunately, as you and I have both seen, that, that our history hasn't been the, been the best in terms of, and I'm speaking on other properties in the city. And I would like, you know, possibly see if we can create a boot camp. I'll just say it one more time. We can create a boot camp so that our visions and the city's visions are in sync. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Did you, Mr. Smith, did you leave your contact information and the, and the link?
I'll make sure I'll do that, sir.
Okay, and I'm sure that Councilmember Carrera will follow up with you. We'll make sure that staff is sitting and passes it along to her.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, just want to circle back to Ms. Tiffany Taylor. Not sure if she was able to, to call in.
I don't think so.
Hold, hold on. I think she's, she's here. Hold on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, while we're trying to connect Ms. Taylor, I do see Nate Durant. Did you have a comment?
Yes, yes. How's everyone doing?
All right, thanks for joining.
Yeah. Hey, hey, hey. I just, I just wanted to make a comment. I am, yes.
No, I didn't mean to cut you off. We will restart your time, but there's a, there's an echo. I'm not sure if we have two devices.
That was, that was Ms. Taylor on, on the, on that other line, so after this, she should be good.
Okay, all right. Thank you, WITN. Okay, sorry about that, Mr. Durant.
Yeah, look, man, I'm like, if I have two devices, somebody need to call the FBI because they coming up in here, man. After watching, after watching Judas and the Messiah, y'all, y'all, I'm a little paranoid, so I need y'all to, if there's an echo, y'all need to let me know. But no, I, I really just wanted to, to just make a comment about the accessibility of the, of the Zoom. I'm a, I, I consider myself a fairly smart person, and it, it felt like I had to jump through a multitude of hoops just to get into, into the Zoom. And I know that we have the webinar, it's broadcast on WITN, but to be able to participate, you have to be essentially in the Zoom. And I was wondering if there's, and I, and I don't expect the answer tonight, but just a, a way to make that more accessible for more people because when we talk about equity and accessibility, it's sometimes little things like this that just need to be brought up, brought up to the attention because you got to go to the, to the website and then click on the, click on the, the meetings and then find the meetings and then find the instructions and then click on the Zoom link, which, listen, I'm, I'm smart. I can navigate to it. However, if there's just like a pop-up window that you could put on the, on the webpage on the night of meetings, so that way citizens, it's more of a streamlined, one-stop shop. I think that could be, that could really be beneficial, and that's, that's my piece. I appreciate the time and hope everyone has a, has a, has a good and safe night.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. So, we will, we're going to, did you leave your contact information in the, in the link? If you're still there.
I, I can, I can, this is just W and Durant. I just gave up. I'm not going to give out my whole thing. I'll, I'll put it in a, put it, put it in the link, and, and I'll be happy to touch base and kind of assist in working through some ways to make it more accessible.
Okay, we would love to have some more of your suggestions. Thanks. So, we'll definitely contact you. Thank you. All right, Ms. Tiffany Taylor?
Standby for a minute.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Smith. You can hear me.
I'm so sorry for the segment.
If you, if you can just mute your, your other device.
Okay, so I just wanted to think about the importance of how the reform and basically holding landlords accountable for when they are not doing the necessary work to the homes in order for us to live safely. As I was speaking last week, it is literally the difference between life and death. I buried my beautiful baby girl. She should be going to 5th grade with her twin brother this year, but instead, I'm holding her in my hand as I speak in her ear. And it's very, very tough, you know, to, it's a, it's a bitter pill to swallow when this landlord has not been held accountable and I lost everything, not just my child. I lost my home. I lost all of my worldly possessions because I wasn't able to take anything with me. And, you know, I'm not really sure what's going on with this guy, but, you know, landlords like him shouldn't deserve to be able to rent. So, we do need better reform and, and better things in place for people like myself who are hardworking and just want to be able to live and breathe in their own house.
Ms. Taylor, were you finished with your comments?
Yes, I'm so sorry. I was breaking up a little bit. But I do want to thank everyone for taking the time to listen to me, and hopefully, we all can, as a community, come together and work something out so that another family has, doesn't have to go through this and bury their child and say goodbye. You know, I have so many high hopes for her, and all of those hopes are gone. My dreams are done with her. So, I can only hope that, you know, something will happen so that another family doesn't suffer the way that my family and I are suffering now. So, again, I thank everyone for listening to me, and I appreciate being invited to speak this evening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor. And again, on behalf of all of us on Council, probably all of us who are on, on this, in this meeting, I just want to offer you our condolences and thank you for your courage in sharing your, your story with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, you, you, you.
Thank you.
I believe that is, I think that's it for, for the comment. Again, I want to thank everyone who engaged with us, with us this evening. I want to continue to ask you to continue to engage us and, and participate and give us your, your feedback and how we can serve you better. That is the whole point of this public comment, so we appreciate you taking time to do so. At this time, we will go to Legislative Business. Our Councilmember.
Make a motion that we move back to Legislative Business.
Second.
All right, thank you. This time, we will go to Legislative Business. Our Councilmember Gray.
We have legislation this evening.
Just another, just another friendly reminder to please remember to mute your devices if you're not, if you're not speaking. Thank you. Councilmember Gray?
Thank you for recognizing. I have a question first before I present my legislation. On the votes tonight, are they majority, majority of present, or supermajority?
So, it, it depends on, if it's a change to the rule, we would need, it would need nine councilmembers to, to support it for the change for it to pass.
So, several.
If, if not, it's just a, the seven majority.
In my legislation this evening is public comment in real time. This is like Groundhog Day, and for most of the councilmembers, this is like the fifth or sixth time they've heard this presentation, so I will predominantly be speaking to the public. This legislation is what we were using for over a year, seemed to work quite well, and the public seemed to be very, very supportive of. It no longer has a residency requirement.
President Congo, excuse me, is Councilwoman Gray presenting her legislation first before she makes comments, or?
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Council, Councilmember Gray, if you can please present your resolution, and then we can go on to questions.
I thought it was a resolution. Is public comment in real time?
Councilmember Gray?
Yes, I'm here. Okay, it's 0019. Whereas in the 108th Session, Wilmington City Council believes openness, transparency, and accountability are important policies, and whereas City Council believes the public should have the opportunity to comment on all legislation with legislative effect during the Legislative Business portion of City Council.
Councilmember Gray? I, I don't mean to cut you off, but actually, our clerk would, would actually present and read beyond the resolution. You would just present it for, in order for her to, to read it, please.
So, she's just sending the resolution for this evening to read it. Council President, if you want me, I can just go ahead and move forward.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Resolution 21012, Agenda 0019. Whereas the 108th Session of Wilmington City Council believes openness, transparency, and accountability are open policies, and whereas City Council believes the public should have the opportunity to comment on all legislation with legislative effect during the Legislative Business portion of City Council meetings. And she can go ahead and move it now for a yeay na.
Move this for a vote. Like to make a motion that this be, that this be moved for a vote?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that this be received, recorded, and filed, adopted by a yeay na vote on the question. It's been properly moved and second, that this be received, recorded and filed, adopted by a ye, nay, vote on the question.
What is the question?
Council member Gray.
As I was saying, sorry about all the confusion, as I was saying, this is like Groundhog Day for most of the council members. We've discussed this five or six different times, so this presentation is basically for the public and people to have an understanding. There is no residency requirement in this legislation. There's a three-minute public comment after, prior to the legislative business, which is general public comment. You may comment on anything, express your opinion. But the most important part of this legislation is the public comment in real time. Three minutes to speak virtually, eye to eye to your councilperson, virtually. Public comment is good governance. It goes all the way back to Thomas Jefferson. Why are we trying to put impediments to people making public comment? I think one of our constituents that was just speaking made a comment about a convoluted process to get into Zoom and to speak even now. So why are we going to try to put more impediments to people making public comment? Are Wilmington citizens demonstrated, walked, screamed, talked, had meetings, have transparency, public comment? And to have inclusiveness. Now, what could be more inclusive than to be able to speak to your councilperson when we are debating the legislation? To be able to listen to them and have all councilpersons hear what you have to comment. In committees, all councilpersons are not there, um, so you might not be able to directly address your opinion to your councilperson, but at council meetings, we are all here, we're all here to hear what you have to say. Councilman Field and I were approached by county councilman Penrose Hollins. He is vehemently in favor of public comment in real time. And he has asked me to make the statement that if city council Wilmington cannot see to give their constituents the freedom to speak in real time during debate, eye to eye, then he will not support any more annexation to the city of Wilmington. And I think he stated, in fact, I know he stated that to councilman Field also, but I am telling you. And if people do not know the annexation of the, um, of the port, that field, uh, what else? The annexation of the brewery, the annexation of the riverfront, the annexation of the, um, the basketball field, they were all sponsored by, um, county councilman Hollins. So that's what I have to say. I hope that my councilmen will support this legislation, that they want to hear from their constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Gray. Council member Johnson.
Uh, without going into the substance of the resolution, um, I, I'm kind of taken aback by, uh, council member Gray's comment. I, I don't know if, uh, councilman Hollins is here. I believe that was completely inappropriate and, um, we should, threats will go nowhere, um, in terms of dealing with city council. So I'm not sure what's going on, but I just wanted to say for the record that I think that was inappropriate, uh, council member Gray, um, to discuss those matters and I believe that should be discussed back room between legislators and people that have issue with how the city votes. But no, and no point should we ever be coerced into doing something, um, that, that borders on, I, I think, um, going against our duties as public servants. So, um, that's all I'm going to say about that and, uh, you know, I appreciate your effort, council member Gray, but I believe there's a better way to negotiate this, thank you.
Thank you, council member Johnson. Council member Oliver.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. President. I also, um, was offended, uh, that, um, county council Penrose would say, uh, asked the councilwoman to make such a statement. As a matter of fact, it sounded like it was a threat, um, and it could be, um, somewhat of a crime, did, did, I mean, to threaten councilmembers if they don't vote, um, his way, that he would stop. I mean, and, I mean, that's just crazy, it's ridiculous. And I think it's, it's, it's an insult to all of us because we have, we took our oath, like he took an oath, but for him to have someone to come on here and threaten, threaten us, I think that was a bit much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, thank you, um, council president. The comment that I want to make is that, um, we definitely, as a legislative body, we have committees set up for debate and discussion. I think I heard councilmember mention that one of the reasons that she's advocating for this particular, um, opportunity is to allow our constituents to have the opportunity to debate and discuss. And on the floor is not where we debate and discuss legislation. We, or, uh, we just debate and discuss legislation in committee. And so even though I plan to support this legislation, I wanted to be very clear that, um, I want us to encourage as many constituents to come to the committee meetings to, to share their concerns, to ask questions and to be able to get a response by your councilperson. Today, the way our meetings are set up, um, a number of our constituents can speak, but we cannot respond. And, and sometimes there's information that's communicated, um, that is not always accurate and we don't have the opportunity to address it. And so I just wanted to make sure that we are not sending out the wrong message as it relates to coming on this council floor to debate and discuss. I, that, I'm very, very passionate about that because, uh, most of the council members are showing up at committee meetings. And if a constituent has a issue and they want to address it in a committee meeting and their councilperson is not there, then they can, um, take that up with their councilmember. But for the most part, the council members, um, for this 108 session have been showing up. And I do know in the 107th, maybe there were some issues, people not being on time, but that definitely has been corrected, especially since we all have been having our meetings in Zoom. So continue to come to council, city, uh, I'm sorry, committee meetings. Continue to connect with your council representative. Continue to support and be a part of a collective body within your community. And you can also reach out, email your, your, your council representative anytime. So like I said, I'm supporting it and, um, but I wanted it to be clear that I really hope our constituents use committee to debate and discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman Harley. Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, um, thank you, council president. Um, I do want to say that I am in support of this legislation. I think it's really important that, um, our residents, family, friends, people in our community are able to make comment. But I do agree that, um, the debate should happen in the committee, um, not on the floor. However, for that to happen, you need to have city council members who are going to encourage people and actually do community engagement in the community to get people out to committee meetings. You can't just say, there's a committee meeting, come, but there's no community engagement piece to it. So I am in support of real-time comment because there is no real outreach to the community outside of civic association meetings, um, to getting people to come to committee hearing meetings. So then now we have to use this space for real-time comment. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman, uh, Darby. Councilwoman Harley.
Oh, yes, and I. Excuse me. Hello? Is there interruption here? I mean, I think somebody.
Please remember to mute your phones, uh, council, or your devices, council members. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, um, I just wanted to mention one thing. If our constituents can show up for a council meeting and they're finding out about the council meeting, the same place they find out about our meetings is the same place they can find out about the committee meetings. I just wanted to say that. So they have an opportunity to definitely find out what, and what and where, you know, these particular items are showing up in what committee meeting because it's the same place you find out about council. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman Harley. Sure, I don't see any other hands raised. All right, before we go back to our sponsor, uh, councilwoman Gray, again, I want to thank you for bringing this back to us. It was a, one of the best pieces of legislation that I think that we passed as a, a council last session and I will be supporting it. Uh, councilmember Gray for closing, I'm sorry, just before we, I do see that councilwoman McCoy raise her hand.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, my apologies, um, I didn't realize that, uh, my hand wasn't up. Um, I just wanted to state that I do appreciate what has actually been brought before us. I'm very happy that we are going to, uh, move forward to start changing the public comment closer, so closer to what we originally had. The difference is it will not be two rounds of, um, of the council people talking, five minute, five minute, and then another round of five. I'm like, I thank you so much, councilman Gray, because you've actually heard what I had to say. That was, um, to me, that was an issue. It was never supposedly about councilpeople and what we had to say, more so about what are the public and what their comments were. So thank you for making certain that, um, uh, that you heard, you heard what I had to say. And I'm like, and, uh, I do like the real time more so because we do not have the benefit of chambers at the moment. So I think that this is a reason why it's so important to me at this moment, okay? So I just wanted to make certain that, uh, you were aware. Thank you so much, Mr. President, for giving me that time to speak.
Thank you, councilwoman McCoy. Okay, back to you, councilwoman Gray, closing comments.
I just want to comment that, um, council stated that the term is debate. What we do on council floor is debate. I am not encouraging constituents to come on and debate with us or among us, but that's the term that I was told to use. So get it straight, I'm really addressing the comments, that I'm not asking for them to debate and I'm not encouraging constituents to debate, but that's the term that is used about our conversation and council. My closing comments are that, um, public comment, oh, and I'm sorry that people focused on that as a threat, but that was just how vehemently, passionately our, um, county councilman believes in public comment in real time and he is a resident of the city. Public comment, while we are in debate, all council members are present and they can hear the voice of the public. I also want to say that I really encourage committee meetings also. And last week, there was an excellent committee meeting where everyone was allowed to speak. It was run phenomenally and that's the type of thing that should happen. But that is not the case in other council meetings, I, in other committee meetings. I've been in committee meetings where the chair did not allow people to speak or the chair answered the questions rather than letting the guests answer the question. So this is a training matter, as I was told. But while we're waiting to train council members and we cannot make them do anything, I think that public comment in real time will take care of a lot of the problems that we have. Also, people demonstrated, constituents demonstrated, they asked for more voice and this would give them more voice. I don't know what council members are afraid of, they just want their way. They don't want to talk to their constituents one-on-one in real time. I just cannot figure out why we cannot progress, why we cannot move along and be a progressive city. We are a city of majority of minorities, we are a democratic council. All of this should be progressive, we should be moving ahead, we shouldn't be stuck in where we were. And I have a quote from Jefferson, I said, this goes all the way back to Jefferson. "The force of public opinion cannot be resisted when permitted freely to be expressed." And we're trying to put more and more impediments on people expressing their opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman Gray. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray? Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
No.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yay.
Councilwoman Fields?
Nay.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Nay.
Councilman Field?
No.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
No.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
No.
Councilwoman Walsh?
No.
President Congo?
Yes.
Six EAs and seven nays.
And declare defeated. Any other legislation, councilwoman Gray?
For the legislation, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilwoman Darby.
Yes, I do, I did have a resolution in regards to judiciary committee. However, I had to talk into of everyone on council, because I like to reach out to everyone when I do my legislation. I'm taking back feedback and I have amendments I need to make, so I'm going to put that on hold for right now. But I do have, um, ordinance. I do have an ordinance to present and I call for the first and second reading of it.
One moment. Ordinance 21007, Agenda 0021. An ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to provide for civil fines for owners of rental properties who fail to secure a business license to operate a residential rental property.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to provide for civil fines for owners of rental properties who fail to secure a business license to operate a residential rental property.
Mr. President.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. Any other legislation, councilwoman Darby?
Yeah, the president, I have another ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 21008, Agenda 0022. An ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to require detailed owner information on applications for a business license to operate a residential rental property.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to require detailed owner information on applications for a business license to operate a residential rental property.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
It's been properly moved and second, that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you, councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for the, uh, first and second reading.
Ordinance 21009, Agenda 0023. An ordinance to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract 21004 WD between the city of Wilmington and Diamond Mechanical, Inc. for HVAC and related systems inspections and maintenance.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract 21004 WD between the city of Wilmington and Diamond Mechanical, Inc. for HVAC and related systems inspection and maintenance.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move this, uh, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer this to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I have, uh, another ordinance, uh, 0024.
Ordinance 21010, Agenda 0024. An ordinance to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract 21005 WD between the city of Wilmington and ID Griffiths, Inc. for boiler inspection and maintenance services.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract 21005 WD between the city of Wilmington and ID Griffiths, Inc. for boiler inspection and maintenance services.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move this be known as the first.
Mr. President, I move this be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer this to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Second. Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have another ordinance, 0025.
Ordinance 21011, Agenda 2225, in order to authorize and approve a one-year extension of contract 21007 WDPS between the City of Wilmington and Merrick Construction Engineers, Inc. for building raceway and facilities management.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to authorize and approve a one-year extension of contract 21007 WDPS between the City of Wilmington and Merrick Construction Engineers, Inc. for building raceway and facilities management.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move this be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one more final ordinance, which will be 0026.
Ordinance 21012, Agenda 0026, in order to enact certain traffic and parking regulations.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to enact certain traffic and parking regulations.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move this be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to their Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. That will be all for this evening.
I thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Harley?
Yes, Council President, I have an ordinance, Agenda Item 0027, to present tonight.
Ordinance 21013, Agenda 0027, in order to name the South Wilmington Wetlands Park Project, the South Bridge Wilmington Wetlands Park.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to name the South Wilmington Wetlands Park Project, the South Bridge Wilmington Wetlands Park.
Yes, Mr. President, I'm.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Works and Transportation, Transportation Committee. That's all I have.
Sorry, was it second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved, and second, that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fields.
Thank you, Council President. I will be presenting a resolution on your behalf, 0028.
Second.
Resolution 21013, Agenda 0028, whereas the 108th Session of Wilmington City Council has taken action through the adoption of City Council Rule 2 to ensure that every legislative item requested by the legislation sponsor in accordance with the notice requirement obtained in Rule 2 is included on council meeting agendas. Mr. President, I have, I, I'm sorry, I make a motion, excuse me, I make a move for the resolution to be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that that resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Mr. President, I would like to read the synopsis as possible, please.
Yes.
No.
And my hand is up on the question.
All right, didn't see it.
Yes, Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to make a statement in reference to this resolution. I would be remiss if I didn't. I, I, I think that, I mean, it's too late, I just have to say what. I think that you should have been, your name should have been in there because you was elected as the president, and I did my research on this, and in 107 years, the president has always set the agenda. So, this is definitely something different, but I had to make this comment that I think that we as a council should have had your name on here as a setting agenda, and I just wanted to make that public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Gray?
Just like to thank Councilwoman Oliver, but that was the point we were trying to make at the last meeting, that this was revolutionary to have a staff member set our agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. See any other hands raised? Yes, as I did mention in our committee of the whole meeting, I am perfectly okay with with our Chief of Staff setting the agenda. Just as a courtesy, you know, all agenda items are, they do come by, they do run through me. But again, I'm okay with it, and I just think that we have bigger items to, to do instead of, I don't want this to be a thing that separates us at all. So, I'm okay with it. I do understand the concern. I think we have bigger fish to fry in our city. So, Councilmember Fields, did you have any closing statements?
Yes, I'd just like to say the resolution amends City Council Rule 2 to grant the authority previously held by the City Clerk to the Chief of Staff of City Council to determine the agendas for City Council meetings. It also amends Rule 2 to provide that the notice requirement for legislation to be included on a council meeting agenda is 14 business days prior to the council meeting. It is in the express intent of council as set forth in Rule 2 that the Chief of Staff shall include on the council meeting agenda every piece of legislation requested by the legislation's sponsor at least 14 days prior to the council meeting. Council President?
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Fields. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
No.
I'm sorry, did you say no?
Correct, no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Twelve yeas and one nay.
Declare adopted. Councilmember Fields, any other legislation?
Yes, Council President, I have another resolution to read on your behalf.
Resolution 21014, Agenda 0029, whereas in accordance with Section 2-104 the City Charter, the City Council shall provide for such committees as it deems necessary. And whereas on January.
I move the regulation, resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question. So, this is just adding Councilmember Oliver to the, to the Health, to the Education, Youth, and Families, and also the Health, Aging, and Disabilities Committee. Council, Councilmember McCoy, Councilwoman McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say welcome, Councilwoman Oliver. I'll be glad that you're joining me on two different committees that I'm on.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
And President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declare adopted. Any other legislation, Councilwoman Fields?
No, that's it for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for a third and a final reading.
Ordinance 21002, Agenda 0012, in order to authorize and approve contract 21023 PR between the City of Wilmington and Food Management Services, Inc. treating at Linton's Food Service Management for the Child and Adult Care Food Program.
Mr. President, I move that this be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that this be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, this ordinance is being presented by Administration for Council's Review and Approval, and it authorizes the execution of this contract, 21023 PR, and it is the Child and Adult Care Food Program, Food Program between the City of Wilmington and Food Management Services. And they, this is a newer organization that we're working with. They've actually had the lowest bid, and they are, even though they're not in, within Delaware, they are very, very close. So, I hope this actually turns out to be a great, a great partnership between these two, between the city and this corporation or organization.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. I don't see any hands from members of council. So, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver? Excuse me, Councilwoman Oliver? Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes. Back to Councilwoman Oliver?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my phone, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declare adopted.
That is all that I have for this evening, Mr. President.
I thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 21015, Agenda 0030, whereas City Council has enacted provisions set forth in Chapter 2 of the City Code constituting Cities Council. Cities.
At this time, I move for this resolution to be received, recorded, filed, adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that the resolution be received, recorded, filed, adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Good evening, Council. This resolution is being presented by Administration for Council's Review and Approval. This is a resolution expressing City Council's concurrence with Mayor Michael Perzikis' appointment of Attorney Theo Nix Jr. and William S. Montgomery to the Wilmington Ethics Commission, effective the date of passage. These, as discussed during committee, these are two very well-known figures in Wilmington, and can now determine that the previous members have expired. I believe the addition of Attorney Nix and Bill Montgomery, who has been around the city for decades and state, I believe are going to be a great, great add to our board.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. I don't see any other hands raised from council members. Well, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Present.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Twelve yeas and one present.
Declare adopted.
Hey, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 21003, Agenda 0013, in order to authorize and issuance of the City's General Obligation Bond Series of 2021 SRF, in order to provide the funds necessary for capital projects.
Mr. President, I move this be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for a yea or nay vote.
I have to read the whole time. Johnson, sorry.
Sorry, skipping ahead.
In order to authorize and issuance of the City's General Obligation Bond Series of 2021 SRF in order to provide the funds necessary for capital projects of the City of Wilmington relating to the City's 15th and Warner Street Combined Sewer Overflow Separation Project providing for the sale of the 2021 bond to the Delaware Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action. Thank you.
At this time, Mr. President, I move this be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that this be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for the yea or nay vote on the question.
Council, this is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a general obligation bond in the amount not to exceed 1 point, approximately 1.3 million dollars. We, from the Delaware Water Pollution Control, and specifically for the housing project at 15th, 16th, and Walnut. It's a sensitive public works project that's underway, and these additional funds are necessary, especially now that we don't have as much traffic in our city or downtown. These projects, it's a great time to get these products done, so that once we have our visitors back and our residents back downtown, you know, we won't have to put them through the hassle of a traffic disruption.
Seeing no hands from council members. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 21004, Agenda 0014, in order to authorize and approve an agreement between the City of Wilmington and the Laro Corporation for onsite engineering services for the WITN TV station.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the Enacting Clause and ask for a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and called for a yea or nay vote on the question.
This, this ordinance is specifically for WITN. It is in agreement with Laro Corporation, and it's for onsite engineering services for the period of March 1st, 2021 to December 31st. and it's for onsite engineering services for the period of March 1st, 2021 to December 31st. And so it's less than a year of contract, and it's estimated price of $1,250 per month. This is supported by WITN, and I believe this is something that is, it's an existing contract, and it's just for ongoing maintenance work. Now, this is not the renovation project. I understand we're working on that phase soon. This is just the maintenance contract. And I believe Laro has been a, been a private consultant and has worked well with them. They are not an in-state contractor, unfortunately, but because of the specialized nature of this contract, there were just, this is a professional service contract. Laro is the best deal and the only company that could equip WITN. So for those reasons, WITN feels confident in the leadership of Ms. Eugenia Taveras. They want to stick with Laro and continue to rebuild WITN, as we do have a lot more in store. I know Council President and I have talked about this, a lot more in store for WITN in terms of making, making sure we continue to engage with the community. So I appreciate support for this contract, and Laro can continue serving WITN.
Seeing any hands raised from council members. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declared adopted.
And, Mr. President, this is the final ordinance I have to present this evening, and I call for a third and final reading.
Ordinance 21-005, Agenda 0015, in ordinance constituting Amendment Number 2 to the Fiscal Year 2021 Operating Budget, being an ordinance to amend substitute number 1 to ordinance number 20016.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for a yea-nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and called for a yea-nay vote on the question.
This is our second budget ordinance of this fiscal year. This is specifically to increase Public Works Department's water sewer fund materials budget by 2.5 million dollars to pay for increased Class B biosolids disposal cost resulting from damage to the sludge dryer at the Renewable Biosolids Center. Budget, budget amendments are something we don't like to always do with council. And the reason this is coming up as we discuss this extensively during Finance and Economic Development Committee is there apparently was damage recently due to the previous, or at least it's alleged that the previous water treatment plant operator operated such a way that damaged our equipment. So now we have to purchase new equipment, get it installed. This is something I believe the city is pursuing possible damages against this, this, this other company. So that's in, through the court process right now, but unfortunately, the city is stuck with the bill for now, and it's 2.5 million dollars. And then we, we have to replace the dryers. It's a type of maintenance or the type of product that we can't do to, because we need it to make sure that the city continues to have clean water. So it's an emergency request that Public Works Department has put in, and I asked for my colleagues' approval so that we can get the, so we can get the water treatment plant fixed.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilwoman Gray?
I just have a question. I think last year we voted and gave a contract to a company that was going to run the facility. If this is the same facility, that's my question for clarification, and they were going to upgrade the equipment at the same time. It was sort of an amortization of what they were charging us for this combined thing of running the plant and replacing the equipment. Is this the same facility and is this the same company?
Well, yes, we do have the new company that has been in place since July, but the, see, the damages occurred during the time the old company was operating the plant. So the new company is engaged in there, and they're doing a fabulous job. Public Works is very happy with them, but the problem occurred during the time the old company had, had the contract.
Mr. President, may I follow up?
Yes, Councilwoman Gray?
So in the contract with the new company, which I understand we're pleased with, part of that was that they were supposed to improve and replace equipment. So if this was done before they came in, isn't that included in their contract that they would replace or improve this broken equipment? They came in with the equipment that was broken from the field. So isn't that involved in their contract to repair it?
No, no, now, Councilmember Gray, and I believe Councilmember Oliver wants to chime in as well. My understanding that they're not, but again, Public Works Chairwoman Oliver may have some more insight.
Yes, I wanted to say...
Councilmember Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to tell my colleague, Councilwoman Gray, we discussed this during the committee meeting. I think you was there. It's like you have an old cash drawn pipe in your house, and it just eroded, it got old, and this was under the previous contractors, and the new one stepped in. So one way or another, if it was the older, the new, it's eroded, it would have had to be fixed anyway, but unfortunately, that's what it is. But this, but this was discussed during the committee meeting. Thank you, Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you. I understand that. That wasn't my question. I understand it's corroded, it's old, and it needs to be repaired. It's an emergency. My only question is that the new company, considering their contract covered facility as it was, isn't that included in the new company's contract to repair this?
As a follow-up, Mr. President?
Yes, just, I just want to remind council members to please wait until you are acknowledged before we speak. Please raise your hands, and I will acknowledge you. Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, as a follow-up, Mr. President, I just would like to reiterate, all of these questions was answered during the committee meeting, and I thought that Councilwoman Gray was there. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was discussed at the committee meeting, and one of the things that the city was asked is that they were going after the old company for the damages that they did not repair. And we were told that they are going after the company, but in the meantime, they couldn't just sit on things that needed repair. So they had to get somebody new in. They certainly didn't want them fixing it, because they were all bringing a lawsuit against them, and they didn't want them to continue in any way, running any of this, which is thereby the new contract. So these people are not responsible for the damages the old company did, but we are going after them for the damages.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh. Councilwoman Gray?
But I guess this is going to revolve itself as a legal matter, because no one has answered my question. And yes, I was at the committee meeting, and it didn't dawn on me then that, or I don't know if it was mentioned, that the, the broken thing was prior to the current company. I understand the situation. I just wanted to know if the current person's contract covered. You know, if you go into something and you buy it as is, or you rent it as is, you're responsible for any repairs from that date forward. So when they, on the contract last July, I thought, my understanding was that they were coming in as is to repair and run the facility. So if that's a misunderstanding, if that's being litigated, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Gray, I, I believe it was, because they did have to do some bids once again. They couldn't just hand a contract this size to somebody without doing some bidding processes. So I'm sure it was.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh. Any other questions from council before we go back to the sponsor? Seeing no hands raised, council, Councilman Johnson?
I just appreciate, you know, again, everyone being engaged. This is something that we do take very seriously, though, what occurred at the water treatment plant. We are blessed and fortunate. In Wilmington, we actually have very clean water, highly rated water, and that's one of the most important duties that, that, that we, that we discharge as council members. So, you know, we don't want to be like a Flint, Michigan. So I appreciate all the colleagues' support in making sure our water treatment plant, plant continues to operate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Clerk, please call her for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declared adopted.
And, Council President, I believe that concludes my items for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilman Field?
Yes, Mr. President. I will be holding Agenda Item 0031 this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other legislation, Councilman Field?
Yes, yes, Mr. President. I have a second resolution to present.
Resolution 21-016, Agenda 0032, whereas pursuant to City Charter, Section 8204, every department, board, and commission may accept on behalf of the city conditional gifts of personal property and money which shall be useful in connection with the work of such department, board, or commission with authority from council, so to do. And whereas Cornerstone West CDC would like to give the city 130,295, excuse me, $299.95 of new playground equipment and up to $150,000 in funding to assist Department of Parks and Recreation's efforts to improve Cool Springs Park. And whereas the Red Clay Consolidated School District would like to give the city $50,000 of new playground equipment to assist Department of Parks and Recreation's efforts to improve Cool Springs Park. Whereas the council, upon the recommendation of the Parks, Department of Parks and Recreation, wishes to authorize the city to accept the following gifts. One, the playground equipment from Cornerstone West CDC, and the Red Clay Consolidated School District, and two...
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea-nay vote on the question.
Mr. President, this is simply, there's a group of, led by Cornerstone West, West Side Groves, and the Red Clay School District. They've done a tremendous job raising money to build a new playground in Cool Springs Park, and this resolution simply is a legal technicality asks for the city to accept, to accept responsibility for it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Field. Seeing no questions from council members. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
Declared adopted. Anything else on Councilman Field? Any other legislation?
President Congo, I have no further legislation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance number 21-006, Agenda 0018, in order to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code to revise certain enforcement provisions to provide civil fines for owners of rental properties.
Mr. President, I have a substitute to present in lieu of that ordinance.
Substitute number 1 to ordinance number 21-006, revision 1 to Agenda 0018, in order to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code to revise certain enforcement provisions to provide civil fines for owners of rental property.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the Enacting Clause of the substitute ordinance and call for a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the Enacting Clause of the substitute ordinance and call for a yea-nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President. I will highlight some of the synopsis of this bill. Basically, currently, the, this is part of a greater housing reform initiative that we will be working on with this, with this particular council, and just in general, things that we've needed to address through the years to look at the state of our neighborhoods and what is going on. Basically, the city has a broken and ineffective system that benefits the landlords. It's almost a year before the LNI department can take any actions on the landlords when they're in violation of the code. So what this substitute does, it changes the enforcement in Chapter 34 with respect to rental properties from criminal enforcement to civil enforcement with civil fines for noncompliance. Now, I do want to mention that owner-occupied properties will continue to be subject to the criminal enforcement proceedings, and this does not address that, nor does it address the vacancies. One of the, you know, I'm going to just highlight some of the key features of this, of the changes. We're going to provide a $500 per unit fine, civil fine, for the landlord who failed to obtain a rental license or register their properties. As it is, the city has identified 7,000 properties that are possible rentals, and a letter has been sent out, giving everyone an opportunity to bring their properties up to code and to register. It also removes imprisonment as a potential penalty in the criminal enforcement proceedings. It provides fines that may be imposed in blocks of seven days instead of a daily fine. The fines are all civil, so there's not an escalating fine system. It requires notices to be mailed to the owner, the operator, or the occupant's property address, and the tax address for the property. In addition, the property manager has been designated on the, that they will also get the notice. It requires a notice to contain information on how to contact the inspector, and that's important, because if a landlord does need additional time to make the, to bring the property up to code, they can ask for that additional time. The city's main concern is that they bring the properties up to code more so than enforcing fines. It also extends the time period in which to appeal. So the violation, as it is now with the criminal code, it's only 10 days, so now they're given 20 days, 20 calendar days. And it also provides that if the appeal fee will, the appeal fee will be refunded if the appeal is successful. It also deletes duplicate or inconsistent penalty provisions throughout the chapter. So it was a way to really bring Chapter 34 of the code under simpler terms and just easier to use. I do want to add, before our council members give their input, is that I personally, and members of the administration and other council members, have spent a lot of time answering questions and addressing any issues that have come forward from individual council members, as well as the Landlord Association, individual landlords, tenants, residents, and the Homes People Movement that has been really working on trying to provide housing equity in the City of Wilmington. So we had long discussions, multiple Zoom meetings, and this is what came about. There have been amendments that were made to the original, which is why we were introducing the substitute this evening, to let you know that your concerns were heard. There's additional awareness clauses that commits to... There's additional awareness clauses that commits to financial and education programs to support enforcement efforts during the budget process. In addition, I do want to add that the mayor has committed a budget line item for funding to assist any renter that may experience displacement, which is one of the big concerns that the Homes Initiative brings forth. If a landlord were to evict someone just because they don't want to bring the property up to code, then we will assist them with the displacement. But one point that I will make out, though, in the criminal version of the code, have people been displaced because landlords don't want to fix the properties? And how many? Where is that data? And also, has anyone, has there been gentrification that's going on in these neighborhoods because of the current code in the criminal version? Because the only thing that I see here is that if you're going to evict someone, you're just going to have more time to evict them in the criminal version. And if you're going to gentrify, you have more time to do that in the criminal version. Otherwise, then that, the civil version is shortening the time that the landlords have to bring their properties up to code, with the exception that if they need more time, they can ask for that. There is a requirement that an invoice be sent to the property owner when civil fines are assessed. So not only do they get a notification of the violation, they will also get a notification that now the fine has been issued because in those thirty days, they failed to contact LNI to ask for more time, and they failed to bring the property up to code. It's also a requirement that the violation notice contain the name of the inspector, but we've already mentioned that, and how to contact them. And also a requirement that it be sent to the property manager. That's one of the things that we added to that, as well as two amendments that we're going to present. And they'll probably be in place before this legislation is enacted, July 1st, were to pass this evening. We do have to revamp the LNI Review Board to make sure that the appeal process is fair, and they can appeal not only the violation, which they have twenty days to appeal, but they can appeal the fine if they're not in agreement that the work that they did still was not up to par. That was a big concern that the Landlord Association brought forward and other landlords. The other thing is that instead of just issuing the five hundred dollar fine when the businesses have been registered as a rental, that the city would send out a notification letting them know that their registration was not received, just in case it was lost in the mail. I understand we still have a very antiquated system of mailing in these applications. And I've been informed by the commissioner that the city is looking at Salesforce as a new system to use to be able to manage these so that we can have this information available electronically, as well as people being able to register their properties electronically instead of mailing it in. So if things get lost in the mail, before you get issued that five hundred dollar fine or you forgot to send it in, you will be given an additional fifteen or thirty days, depending what we decide, to go ahead and be notified that your registration hasn't been received. So I just let our council members know, and you, Mr. President, that I understand that there's issues and concerns. But if we don't start taking action now, then when? We talk about stability. We talk about the renters, our constituents, and serving them. So if we're serving them, then we really need to look at them having the opportunity to live in safe housing, houses that are up to code, houses that don't have mold, where children get sick and die, and not to mention what it does to our neighborhoods. So I'm really hoping that every council member who has reached out, that you read our responses to your questions, and that you would take a real good look at supporting this legislation because it's in support of your constituents. Thank you. Any other comments I'll make afterwards?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera. Councilman Johnson?
At once it's first, just hats off to Councilmember Cabrera. I can't understate this, just the diligence, the effort, this sleepless night she has put in to engage with everyone. So no matter what side of the aisle you're on with this bill, you know it was quarterback, this bill was quarterbacked by someone who really puts the work in. And prior to that, Councilman Frill put years of effort and engagement in this process. So this is kind of a watershed moment. It's actually, it's emotional because it's taken a lot of years to get to this point. This is the culmination of years and years of work, and this is just beginning. I believe we're all aligned on this, council. Council President Congo has given us that vision of we're stepping up to talk about blighted neighborhoods. We're stepping up talking about education. We're stepping up talking about criminal justice reform. This is our time in Wilmington, and it means for everyone. And we no longer will stand by while our neighborhoods are taken advantage of. And yes, I certainly get that this bill is not perfect. No bill is perfect. But we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Perfection is what has choked Wilmington neighborhood that we've allowed this system to go on while residents, frankly, are suffering. And so I've heard the call. I know Councilmember Cabrera has, and we appreciate the work. I ask everyone to support this bill as I do, and folks in my district have let me know that they do. And we're going after vacant housing next. And that's going to be the next thing we're looking at. And we're going to revamp LNI. We've got a lot of work to do, but this is just beginning. So thank you, everyone. I hope you support it.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilwoman Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to also deal with what Councilman Johnson said. I mean, words can't explain how many late nights that Councilwoman Maria was texting my phone, talking about this bill. And I mean, a couple of times, I was like, look, just go to bid. It is two o'clock in the morning. But with that being said, the federal government, you know, has, you know, you know, outstripped low-income housing. They don't even call it that anymore. It's called affordable housing. That went out in the eighties. And I wanted to say, Section 8 has replaced low-income houses. I've been working on housing for years with the former Wendell House. So I'm very familiar with a lot of these houses. And then in the third district alone, we have, I have over, we have over close to three hundred vacant properties. So no one, and I hear landlords talking, I hear people talking. So nobody lives it like I live it in the third district. You talk about vacant properties and individuals living in slum housing and landlords constantly not fixing them up. I mean, you know, many nights I've had to put them up in hotels. And I know, President, you have to also, you know, pay for different rooms for people to stay because of slum lords. And this bill doesn't define the whole housing section. And I think people's getting that confused. The housing section is thick like two dictionaries. This is just amending one little section of trying to make landlords accountable and to try to stabilize our neighborhoods. And with that being said, thank you so much, Mr. President, for all the work you do for the people who have been kicked out. And I know for a fact, because I know two people that you put up personally, and I appreciate the work you've done with this housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank former Councilmember Frill, who I believe put over five years of work into this legislation. And now with Councilwoman Cabrera, who absolutely was making phone calls at one and two o'clock in the morning about people that she might have met that day and whether or not there was going to be movement on either side. And I started thinking about this last week, that for the last five years especially, since this bill has really been on the radar of everybody. While the politicians were arguing with each other, or administrations
Walsh, it's kind of hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you. While politicians have been fighting with each other, while administrations have been arguing back and forth with each other, while court cases have come and gone, and all the other things that have been going on about this bill, and no one came up with a real conclusion. The only people that's been hurt in the last five years have really been the tenants. Is this bill going to answer every problem that the tenants face? Absolutely not. Nothing is perfect, and especially in this country anymore. But this is a step in the right direction for the tenants. Why can't we give them a little bit of light through that really dark tunnel that many of our renters face all over our city? I think this is the first step in bringing light into their lives. And I congratulate Councilmember Cabrera for the job that she's been doing on this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh. Councilwoman Gray?
Everyone is, people have repeatedly been commenting about displacement and evictions. At this time, the courts are not entertaining evictions. There are no evictions. I shouldn't say there are no. What is is, there are only evictions in the interest of justice. That means that the landlord has to show that he's in dire straits financially or the tenants are destroying the property. Otherwise, as long as the feds and the state are providing landlords with supplemental income, the courts are not going to entertain evictions. This is during COVID. And considering that we have President Biden in, I guess this will probably extend into 2021, quite a few months. So I'm just addressing people claiming about people being displaced and not having someplace to live because of repairs that are needed that will not be happening anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. Council, Councilman Field?
Thank you, President Congo. I think this is a good bill. It's a good first step in what will be a series of housing-related ordinances in the 108th City Council session. It's not perfect, but I've weighed all the arguments. And I believe this is, this really is a good first step, and I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Field. Councilwoman Darby?
Thank you, Council President. So I am opposed to this piece of legislation. It is also known as the Blight Bill. I believe the intent behind it is driven by profit rather than the well-being of Wilmington. I believe there's two different philosophies that have been talked about through going back and forth about amendments in regards to how you improve housing and strengthen neighborhoods. One is like fees and fines versus preserve, protect, and investing in neighborhoods. And when you look at similar cities like Detroit, who did the same exact thing, implementing fees and fines to try to get landlords in compliance, it only ended up getting to eleven percent. Fees and fines do not make people become comply to comply with any law. That's not how it works. So I am not in support of fees and fining people. And it's a potential for land grab. It is a potential for gentrification based off of the implications and the impact of this legislation in the long run. So evictions aren't happening now. However, COVID is not going to last forever, and we're going to go back to whatever our new normal is, and we'll get back to people being evicted. I run a nonprofit outside of here. I work with a lot of mothers, and they are experiencing, they have in the past before COVID, they were experiencing evictions. But with COVID now, evictions aren't happening like that. But we need to be mindful that this is not going to be, COVID is not going to be here forever to protect people. So we'll just spend a lot of time with me, working with the community, community organizations, landlord association, homes, and residents in the community on combat and making sure the impact of this bill, just lessening the impact. We'll just spend time, I guess, the next year or two, just making sure we pass legislation that we can lessen the impact, that the negative impact this bill will have on the community, which is really sad. And that we sat down with the Homes Committee. We sat down with other entities, and most of their amendments were not addressed. Most of them are just promises. Most of them are maybe, it may happen. We'll look at it later. So that has not been a process that has been inclusive at all. So I want to say thank you, guys. I'm opposed to it, and we'll just be working on making sure we submit legislation to stop the impact of this bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Harley?
Thank you, Council President. I'm not going to rehash all that has been said because I think that all those that are in support of this legislation have done a pretty good job in summarizing, you know, where we started and where we are. So I just want to say that, for those that are listening for the first time, that the version of this bill today has all to do with council members, the administration, getting feedback from the community to get this bill where it is today. I personally had a conversation with the mayor. When this bill first came out, I reached out to the mayor, and I said, "Mayor, we need to get the message out to the community and allow the community to share their feedback." The mayor actually set up meetings throughout the whole city of Wilmington, on the east side, north side, South Bridge, in all different areas of the city to get feedback. And I just wanted to say, not only did the mayor make a strong effort to get feedback from the community, council members have shared their input. I know I've shared my input with Councilmember Frill. And even within this particular 108th, I know I've had a conversation with the mayor regarding renters. And in a situation where there's a conflict between the property owner and the city of Wilmington, he committed to a provision to be supportive of the renters. So there's been a lot of work put into this legislation, starting with Councilmember Frill back in December. And one of the reasons that I didn't vote for it back then, even though I felt as though the legislation had come a long way, I felt that because the second district did not have representation, that was one of the reasons that I was on record stating that was why I did not vote. So here we are, discussing it, looking at it, and making sure that it is where it needs to be. So I'm definitely in support of it. I mean, as it relates to the appeal process, everything that has been addressed, and a lot of the concerns have been addressed. Councilmember Cabrera have already gone over that. I'm not going to repeat that. But I just want to say that when you go through this city and you look at the properties where is blighted, it's basically brown and black people. And the majority of those property owners are not brown and black people. So all I'm simply saying is that it is time for us to be real advocates for our tenants. I don't know, I haven't seen any data where renters are going to be stressed as a result of us reinforcing the code to make sure that we have safe and healthy communities. I only see this as a win-win, and there's going to be provisions for the renters. And if you are a land, you are a property owner, and you are doing what you are supposed to do with your property, what concern is it? What concern is it? So I'm just saying, we have what we need in place here. And lastly, many property owners receive relief from the government. This is the first time that a lot of these property owners was able to get their rent paid on time. The state had a rent relief program. I know I was personally involved in helping renters pay their rent with landlords. So I would think that a lot of landlords are in a better position today than they were before. So I am in support of this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harley. Council, Councilwoman Fields?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd just like to thank you for acknowledging me. Secondly, I really truly appreciate all the different housing reform organizations and neighborhood civic associations. But what I would like to say is this. I am a lifelong resident of Fifth District. And a lot of the people, not a lot, I'm going to say, some of the people that may support this bill, they don't live in my neighborhood. So when I walk out my back door or my front door, they do not see the blight. They don't see the apartments, they don't see what these houses are looking like. I see this every day. I can walk up the street, and I can see the apartments, what they look like. I've had plenty of opportunities to walk into buildings and apartments with other people where they had, where they had to with other people where they had to move out, leave there where they were, and be given vouchers to live in, to stay in a hotel. So when people, they have a good intent, and when they say, "Oh, we're here to support the black and brown community." I am black, and I am from this community. And that's what I'm here for. I'm here to fight for my people, and I'm here to fight for my community. So with all that being said, I do support the legislation because it addresses the very issues my constituents are living in on a daily basis. I represent the 5th District, and there are areas in my district suffering from blight, right, blight properties that are not maintained by landlords, property owners, and vacancies everywhere. Let me just go back. I have 85% to 95% of rent properties in my district alone. Okay, let's go ahead. This legislation is a start to addressing the rentals amendments. Rentals amendments were made to accommodate the concerns brought to our attention. I participated in those meetings. However, there is more work to be done. I plan to work along with Councilmember Cabrera and the other housing reform and neighborhood stabilization and stabilization, stabilization, excuse me, is long overdue. We need to keep in perspective those we represent are residents who deserve to have a quality of life under their roof. I just want to read something really quick. And this is, this is a quote by Henry Ford. "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success." So if we take that quote and we apply it to everything that we're trying to do, we will be successful as 108th Council. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Field. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do want to applaud the efforts of the sponsor for making sure she was available for answering a lot of my questions, as well as others I've seen that have come to her as well. Unfortunately for me, I still have a few things that I think still need to be clarified. And seeming that it most likely will pass this evening, I just hope that these things could be considered as we move forward, as I heard that there were going to be additional amendments. I would like to know, one, there should be a fiscal note. I know it says currently that it's unknown, but if we know that we're going to charge people $500 for unregistered properties, we should have a number of how much we're going to wind up getting as revenue for that. Same thing for charging $250 for civil fines. We should also have a number that goes into that as well. We did have that, which I did appreciate in the previous legislation. Regardless, just to see where the amount and what type of revenue will be coming into the city, and how much also that the mayor has agreed to put into the Whereas Clause around displacement. I would like to also know what that number is for displacement as well that is planned to be a fund. And then also, as I stated in previous, and the fight for the last three and a half years over this legislation, and I'm happy that it did to a place where it is singular versus the complexity of what it was previously. But I still feel like there's not really enough incentives, still more penalties. And then I hope that we start to get quarterly updates, as I'd said in the committee meeting, that should be included in the language so that there's a time period that we can revisit the performance of what's happening within the legislation that I know that the Commissioner has already agreed to that he would do. And that I did also appreciate that was in the previous legislation as well. Again, I hope that these things are considered. And again, I applaud the work that has been done over the period of time. But as of right now, there's still so many questions I still have, so I will not be supporting it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. Councilwoman McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to, I also want to applaud Councilwoman Cabrera. She's had reached out to me many times. I know we've gotten a chance to go back and forth, maybe on text, and then also a nice, long conversation, as well as the community, the seed-up community development urban planning meeting. And so with that being said, it's, she did her due diligence, made certain that people got a chance to have input. Of course, you know, we do still see, I do still see some things that I wish I would like to see here. But as she had explained to me that, and also David Sauber, the fact that I, basically, I know I was one of the ones, people who basically stated that that last piece of legislation was just overwhelming, and we need to make certain that we made it simpler, made it smaller. So this is what we have. I intend to see other pieces of legislation actually join this because, as has been stated, this is not, this is not really what, everything that it should be. You know, everyone states it's not perfection. Yes, we do realize that. But there are some things that I really feel like needs to, needs to be added or needs to be addressed, that may be another piece of legislation to add to this so that we do not get ourselves into a place where all we're doing is looking at the outside of buildings when things like Ms. Tiffany, I think her name, Mrs. Taylor, when she stated what happened is something that we wouldn't be able to see from the outside. In order to really make certain that we're helping our residents, we have to get in these places. And that's something I feel like that definitely needs to be addressed. The stabilization of the neighborhoods is basically what the city had. They say that they're aspiring to this. You know, my concern has always been that we are going to create a tool that's going to basically make vacant properties. So, and we know that this does not address vacancies, and they will be, we'll be working on that soon. So I look forward to seeing that as well. Because they can, you know, when they talk about things about gentrification, gentrification, you know, is not like it's just an overnight thing. This is, all of this stuff is the long, the long game. And if we do not get a piece of legislation that's going to work to making certain that the people are actually caring for their properties, but rather, you know, or people getting kicked out or walking away or whatever it is, like, we don't want that to happen. We don't want what Ms. Darby said, like in Detroit or whatever. We want to make certain that they are actually applying this and doing what's correct for the city. I'm going to, you know, I'm actually going to support this only because I really demanded to have something more singular and try to focus on one thing. And I know that I'm going to be putting together a legislation to accompany this because this isn't enough. But I do want to see some things start moving forward, and I don't want to be the one who's always like, "This isn't it. We have to figure this out, and this, well, this isn't, this doesn't encompass everything." But we're definitely going to find things that, that will help this. And I just want to say thank you to, like, the Homes Campaign, for actually giving us ideas and giving us that policy tracker because I think those are the types of things that we're going to need to actually accompany this type, this type of legislation. So I just, I just wanted to make certain that people had an understanding of where I was when it came to this vote and why I'm voting the way I am.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. Councilwoman Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. I do want to pile on the praise that Councilmember Cabrera has received. You know, she spent countless hours reaching out to all the different groups, soliciting feedback, not just from them, but from the public, from council members. And I think, you know, she really led an inclusive process, and this is the bill that we have. And, you know, as we heard from public comment, you know, lives are at stake with this. And this is, this is a bill that is not perfect. Nothing is. But it's a step in the right direction to help hold landlords accountable and increase the quality of life for some of our renters in Wilmington. So I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Spadola. Before we move to Councilwoman Harley, I just want to remind council members, especially our new members, that you do have two opportunities to speak. So this is Councilwoman Harley. This is your second opportunity. And again, the sponsor will go last. So Councilwoman Harley, this is your second time speaking.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Thanks for that reminder. I forgot to mention, number one, that the majority of my constituents in the 4th District, the majority, I'm not saying every constituent supports it, but the majority of my constituents support this legislation. Mr. Hughes, who has shown up several times and shared in public comment how he feels about this. I definitely want my constituents to know that I hear them. I even put out communications to them. I got feedback the first time around when we was discussing this legislation. So first and foremost, I'm definitely listening and supporting those that I represent in the 4th District. And then, secondly, as it relates to the fines, I've had a long conversation with our Commissioner of LNI. If the landlords receive a violation, communicate, communicate, communicate. When you communicate to the Commissioner, the LNI Department, to share what your intentions are and your plans are, you really should not be getting a fine. So I just wanted to encourage those that are on the other side of this legislation that's thinking about money and fines. I don't believe that this is designed to be punitive. I really believe that it's designed to reinforce the code that's already in place. And again, if you get a violation, just don't ignore it. Reach out to LNI and let them know what your plans are, and you, more than likely, will avoid fines. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harley. Councilwoman Gray, this is your second go-round.
First, being a landlord is a business. So I think that the landlords should take into consideration that maintenance and upkeep of their property is part of that business. Having done LNI for years as a magistrate judge, I do think this legislation solves the problem. It gets to the point. Because as a judge, I saw repeatedly where people refused to make the necessary repairs, and the process started all over again. The criminal method did not give the results that we were looking for. It did not repair the properties. It could not make the landlords repair the property. It just fined them. So I think finally, we have a piece of legislation that will satisfy the intent of what LNI is doing, which is to manage and make sure that living spaces are livable and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. Have any other hands raised from council members? I do see a hand raised from the public, but we, per our rules, we do not have public input during legislations. I didn't want you to think that we were ignoring your hand being raised, but we don't have public comment during this time. Again, I do want to thank Councilwoman Cabrera for the tremendous work that she has done around this legislation. Pretty impressive, the work that you put into it. So thank you so much for that. I do have concerns around the legislation. I really do want to support it, but there are just so many, a few holes in it that has me concerned. I believe that the intent, some of the intent is for the betterment of Wilmington, but I don't believe that all the intent is for the betterment of Wilmington. I'm extremely concerned about gentrification. Pretty much every major city around Wilmington has been gentrified. And I do want to make sure that doesn't, that that does not happen, happen to Wilmington. So this, this is, this legislation does have a lot of good pieces to it. So don't get me wrong. I know it's going to pass. I just, I just have concerns around it. So unfortunately, I do, I won't be able to support it, but I look forward to supporting it in the future to make sure that the intent behind it is what we see as a council and as residents. There were some very good points made from council members. I think Councilwoman McCoy, she made a great point that this does not allow us to get into the homes where we can see some of the damage that was talked about during public comment. This doesn't address that. So I do, I do, I want, I want it to work. I'm not going to support it this evening, but I do, I do want it to work for all of us. I'm looking forward to the, to the discussion of how we can make sure that is perfect. So when we present legislation, and we normally present legislation that we know that is not 100%, that concerns me. So why not make it 100% before we, before we pass it? It also concerned me that this legislation had seven sponsors before it even came up for discussion. So before the public even got to have any input at a committee meeting, it already had seven sponsors. That concerns me also. But again, I'm not going to belabor the moment, and I will ask for closing comments from, from the sponsor. And again, great work, Councilwoman Cabrera. And also just as a side note, it's interesting that we, we debated this again and gave our opinions on council floor, but we didn't allow the public to do that. So that's, that's disheartening. But Councilwoman, Councilwoman Cabrera, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you, everyone, for your comments and for your support. Certainly, I was not looking for praise because I look at us as working as a team. And for every council member that had a question or a concern and came forward, you were part of that team. You also put in just as much work in listening and addressing the concerns that your residents and your constituents may have brought up to your attention. So I do want to address a few points because people did make public comment, and I wanted to make sure that I addressed some of their questions and some of the other comments that were made. First, I will say again, this is not a BLIGHT bill. This is an amendment to Chapter 34 of the City Code. That is the name of it. And if we're going to give it a nickname, let that be Neighborhood Stabilization, to overcome the blight in our neighborhoods. In terms of the comment that you have made, President, about gentrification, again, I will ask the question. This legislation is just changing from criminal to civil. It already exists in the criminal. So if landlords are getting fined and going through the court process to try to get them to bring their properties up to code, has gentrification occurred because of that? And have renters been displaced because now the court is holding them accountable, which takes nine months to a year versus the city holding them accountable to fix those properties? And I would say this. If Wilmington doesn't want to be gentrified, then how about holding all those property owners, including landlords, property owners, and dealing with our vacant situation? That way, no one has to come up and buy them up. Because if these properties were kept up to code, I bet you they wouldn't be selling because they would be making money for those landlords. So that is what I'm going to say to that. I know people address concerns about this not including the vacant properties, and the landlords brought up concerns about the homeowners not being brought up. So with that, I would say that there is going to be future legislation. You've already heard, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Darby already has legislation to go into committee addressing the vacant properties. So I believe that as a council, we are all committed to neighborhood stabilization. This bill is not a cure-all. You can't put everything in one bill and legislate everything, Mr. President, and others who are critical. It's not going to be perfect, but we got to start somewhere. If not now, then when? Every day that goes by that these people, that folks in our city, our constituents, sit and squalor that these children can't breathe in their homes is a day, one day too many. So again, we better ask ourselves, who is it that we're trying to protect here? And for the person who made the comment, I already addressed the fees because these fees are actually more affordable because it's a flat 250, it doesn't escalate, and you're not getting fined every day. Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. We took the "too much" out of it and just streamlined it. You can't price someone out of a neighborhood when there's a fair market price. So I highly doubt that you're going to get $1,500 rent and displace your renter when everyone else is paying $900 because that's all that you can get for that neighborhood. But people living in squalor, for the folks that talked about housing stability, I want to know how living in squalor is stable. I want to know how children, who, studies have shown that when children live in, in homes that are safe and clean and, and in just a stable environment, they do better in school. So when we talk about addressing our education issues with our children, it is a housing issue as well, because they should be living in safe homes that are up to code. When you talk about crime, the data clearly shows that the neighborhoods that have the most violations, the most vacancies, and the most rentals are the same neighborhoods that have the highest amount of the Part I crimes. So there's two things that we can do with neighborhood stabilization. Now, for Councilmember Darby to answer your questions, this is not new legislation. This exists in the criminal version. So all we're doing is switching it over to civil. So those fines already exist. So if this is hurting, again, the neighborhoods and the renters, then I'd like to know and see data on how it's currently doing that. Because how else can we hold the landlords accountable? What is being proposed here to hold the landlords? Because how else can we hold the landlords accountable? What is being proposed here to hold the landlords accountable? Fees and fines, fees and fines already exist, and that's not even working the way that it is in the criminal system. But maybe now that they're going to be held accountable a little quicker, yes, they need to have those fees because if we don't hold them accountable with their pocketbook, I'm not sure how else we're going to hold them accountable. Should we take away their business license? Because if we do that, then I'll tell you what will happen. People will be evicted and people will be displaced because you can't run a business without a license. Although it appears that seven thousand landlords are doing that currently in the city of Wilmington. So they too would be held accountable. Um, so these amendments, um, the other thing is I really don't appreciate the comment of saying that we were not very inclusive with the Homes Committee because I personally, along with other council members, sat through two presentations that they made. Not only that, we had two Zoom meetings that you requested, and we invited the members of the Homes Campaign, and those meetings lasted more than an hour and a half. So yes, all those issues were addressed by the administration, by the Law Department and by Commissioner. So with that said, this was a very, very inclusive process. Just because all the amendments couldn't be part of this bill doesn't mean that it wasn't inclusive. We've already agreed that there's other legislation that we can do, and some of it is administrative. We can't administrate everything and we can't legislate everything. Um, so that's what we have to do. Um, the other thing is, I do want to say to um, to all of the council members in closing, I want to thank you, everyone, that for all your feedback, everything that you've done, whether you support this or not, I'm just glad that, you know, we got together to work as a team. Uh, for members who already believed in this, they already agreed that they would go on board with this legislation. Um, I did not request that those names be added when the legislation was introduced. They added themselves. So that is fine. I'm glad that they're supporting it, and I'm glad that we have two additional members. I want to thank Commissioner Starkey for all the time that he put into this, as well as answering questions and for the amendments that were made. Uh, Dave Safran with the Policy Analyst with the Administration, just all the information, answering all the questions again, helping me reach out to everyone and make sure that they have the correct information. The Law Department, Rose Tassone and Bob Goff and everybody that was involved. And I want to, you know, thank the mayor for his commitment to supporting the renters in the city of Wilmington, to supporting, stabilizing our neighborhoods, and his commitment to putting monies into a public awareness and outreach campaign so we can engage the renters, the people, the residents of Wilmington, we can engage the homeowners as well because they too have to keep their properties up. And we can engage the landlords and let them know that they need to register their properties because maybe they just don't know. They just thought they could buy a property and rent it. So we're just going to say that they didn't know and we're going to educate them. Uh, so that um outreach is just as important. So at this point, I will call for a vote.
Second.
Uh, please call for a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
No.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
No.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
President Congo?
No.
Any aides and free?
I'll adopt it. Councilwoman Cabrera, any other legislation for this evening?
No further legislation this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Councilman Spadola?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes, I have an ordinance for introduction, Mr. President.
Ordinance tw- twenty-one zero ten, excuse me, twenty-one zero fourteen, Agenda zero zero three three, in order to authorize and approve three one-year extensions of contract two one zero zero one P D P S between the City of Wilmington and Asset Management Alliance for professional service building management at the Public Safety Building.
First, you're getting other ordinance?
In order to authorize and approve three one-year extensions of contract two one zero zero one P D P S between the City of Wilmington and Asset Management Alliance for, for professional service building management at the Public Safety Building.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I mean, I move that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
It's been properly moved and seconded that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and referred to the Public Safety Committee. Any other legislation, Councilwoman?
That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to petitions and communications, and I will start with Councilwoman Walsh. And uh, just before you, Councilwoman Walsh, just before you go, I just want to remind council members that we cannot discuss anything that was on the agenda during our commission, our um, communication and petitions. Thank you.
Huh?
Councilwoman Walsh?
Okay. Um, the only thing I wanted to bring out was a resolution that was done tonight in case some of the council members missed it. I I'm talking about a death resolution, not anything of significance, Mr. President. But Mrs. Hare was the mother of a former council member. So those who may have known her from living in Brown Town or know her son um, from working with him at various charities, um, her funeral mass is tomorrow at Saint Elizabeth Church, I believe. Um, so if you want to send a card or something, uh, now would be the time to do it. And that's all I really have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh. Uh, Councilman Spadola?
Thank you, Council President. Um, just wanted to uh, thank Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Cabrera, Councilmember Oliver um, for the events on the east side that we did this past weekend honoring Pastor Ben, uh, and then some uh, some ribbon cuttings as well uh, in line with Black History Month. Uh, it's good to, good to be out and about in the community despite the the freezing rain and the bad weather. But uh, it's, it was good to get together for um, you know, positive purpose, and I look forward to uh, some more of that. I think, Council President, your, your suggestion about the uh, the food drive is a step in the right direction for us doing stuff where we, we can all agree on the necessity of a, uh, you know, uh, food, food security, and uh, you know, the more positivity, I think it'll uh, engender, uh, you know, better, better relationships on council, which will more importantly, re- lead to uh, better outcomes for the city. It's not about getting along. It's about how those relationships help advance the city. Um, so the more we can do that, the more helpful it is as a means to an end. So uh, that's all I have tonight. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just have uh two quick things. Um, one, just wanted to make announcement that our Health, Aging and Disabilities Committee meeting will be on February twenty-fourth at five P M. And that also New Destiny um is having some events coming up, actually, starting tomorrow. Um, it'll be on February nineteenth. Uh, they're doing a free drive-up COVID nineteen testing from twelve to two um, tomorrow. And then also, it'll be held in their parking lot of New Destiny Fellowship, uh, which is on Sixteenth Street. Um, you don't need to register or an appointment um, in order to be there. You can just come during that period of time. And then at the same time, they're also doing a food and um, food fest where they're giving free food giveaway as well um, from that same time period from twelve to two. Um, they'll be giving out over thirty pounds of food. So look forward to seeing constituents over there tomorrow to take part in testing as well as the food feast. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. Councilwoman Cabrera?
I'm mute. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, for right now, I guess, the focus is going to have to be on really getting the word out about the vaccines, where people can go. I will say that I'm getting a lot more questions from residents, um, everyone in the community, especially the Hispanic community and some of the seniors that are sixty-five and over that still have not uh, been able to get their vaccine. Um, I know there's a lot of information that um, we receive, so I would just encourage um, our council members and everyone that, you know, just to share, uh, get the information out there. I know I'm on the board of a couple um of the subsidized housing like Sacred Heart and Los Haldines and trying to make sure that the residents get that information. So I think moving forward, that's one of the things uh, with the vaccinations being out that we could work as a group. I do want to congratulate um the homeowners over at Shepherd's Way, um, where the Waltz Chicken used to be and the beautiful homes that they purchased, which again goes to show how a part of our city, um, when Waltz closed down, it was just, you know, you just had these vacancies. You just had a part of the city that wasn't, you know, as attractive as it is now. You have these homeowners, and I know they're going to take care of the block. I mean, things are looking so good over there. Um, I have to say that, you know, the, the home, the new owners too of the mobile, of the mobile um, clothing van. Um, I think that's amazing. And Councilwoman Oliver, these are people in your district, and I'm glad I was able to join her on that wet rainy day. Maybe that's what led to me getting my cold, but I was happy to be out there. And then just all the work that has been done when you have responsible people like Che, you know, he, he bought those properties. He's fixed them up. He's got business owners in there, and that's what true development of a city looks like. And these are people that are from the community, that have bought properties in the community, that live in the community and support those business owners. Um, so those are things that I would like to see more of. And I just want to say that, you know, for everyone out there, again, um, you have my commitment. We're going to work hard on neighborhood stabilization. We have a lot of issues coming up, especially with what is going on with COVID. Um, our children, like my son said, I I don't know. He says, Mom, I'm not learning anything. These teachers aren't really teaching me anything. I'm on these calls. I'm, you know, I'm doing the work, but what am I really learning? Um, and I feel that, that we're going to have some challenges with the next um, generation of children that are graduating, if they graduate, in terms of how we can further educate them. Um, so there are some resources out there. Um, we just want to, also want to let you know that they're taking applications for the youth uh, employment program. Um, I know they give it a different name, but make sure that your, your kids sign up, that they're involved because I know they just want to work and make money. Um, there is also the Boys and Girls Club. They have these learning pods uh, where the children can sign up again up to ages thirteen to seventeen and get some extra help with tutoring. And then there's the Tennis Rocks Program. They also have tutoring available. So just, you know, I'm just thinking about my own son struggling through this and trying to learn the community trying to get the vaccine, and just, those are things that just want to keep in the forefront for everyone. And again, thank you to everyone for your support this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera. Uh, Councilman Field?
Thank you, President Congo. I think this was another good meeting, and thank you to everyone on the council for all the hard work that they're, they're doing and and putting into the work that goes into these meetings. And I look forward to continuing to work together as we progress in the one that we have city council session. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Field. Councilman Johnson?
Um, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to uh, for the schedule for this upcoming week, there's the uh, Fourth Street Visionaries uh, meeting, um, where we're specifically um, going to be, have dart officials there and talk about uh, uh, transportation corridor project for Fourth Street. Um, so I believe uh, both me and uh, Councilmember um Fields will be there. Um, and again, it's just uh, talking about our corridor project as um, during this transition, especially with ninety-five, uh, project which uh, begins next week, um, it's going to be vital uh, that we continue to look at a corridor and how we can improve life there. Um, so please come out. It's at six thirty on Monday evening. It's on Zoom. Um, and this really just to follow up with Councilmember Cabrera, we continue to work definitely on the west side, uh, west side group and looking at different ways we can communicate um, to folks, not only the testing, um, which we continue to have the curative sites um, throughout the city. Um, but also just the vaccine, uh, is one thing unfortunately, I don't think we've probably done a great, good enough job with, especially in black and brown communities. Um, so we're going to be looking at different options, and and please comment your suggestions on ways we can promote the community, whether it's having community leaders or um, athletes or music stars, whatever we can do to promote it in the black community if that's necessary. I mean, up in Philadelphia, they have a Black Doctors Consortium, which has been really powerful um, in terms of um, getting the vaccine to our community. Um, so in Wilmington, we still have a lot of work to do. So uh, please uh, share your ideas with me or the um uh, Chair, Chairwoman McCoy, the Health Committee, or any of us about ideas on which we can um, spread the word about the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilwoman McCoy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I actually just have uh, one real announcement, um, because uh, a few of the council people have already covered the others. The Roberto Clemente Baseball League, they are registering also. Uh, they have open registration. Their website is W W W league lineup dot com uh, backslash Wilmington R C. So they have made me aware. I definitely make certain that I try to put it on all my uh, the groups and the posts. And uh, as Councilwoman Cabrera says, like, these children are totally isolated and distracted, and right now they really need something else to kind of like, you know, pick them up. So I definitely um think that some of this um, sports outside, you know, getting, getting ready for the spring is something that we should all be looking forward to. Hopefully with vaccines, you know, people wanting to get their vaccines will ha- help us have a safer spring. Um, the other thing I would like to um, mention is we had a uh, the preservationist community actually had a meeting last night. I thank all those who actually um, who got on the call, who made certain that their voices were heard, and it was about the Brown Mansion in Brown Town, which sits uh, you know, right in Sixth District. Uh, what is actually going on is that um, there is an RFP actually went out. They look, are looking to do development, but the, where they would like to develop is actually where that um, where that historic site is. The building, the mansion per se is actually, you know, um, been on historic registry since nineteen seventy-nine, from what I understand. And people are giving me more and more information about, you know, uh, the reason why it's actually historic and why it should be preserved. So there were a lot of people who actually were on the call who state that they really um, they were really to look for a restoration rather than demolition or demolition by neglect. I just wanted, uh, as I said, I just want to thank those people on the call. Actually, thank one of my colleagues for reaching out to me uh, because me personally, I am a person who lives in a history buff. And but at the same time, my community is actually of two minds. So, you know, those who actually have understanding about the history would like to see it restored, and the people who are fairly new there are like, if they're not going to fix it, then let's move on. So I am uh, I'm going to have a community meeting. I'm actually looking now for sometime next week and hope to be able to post that information. Hopefully by tomorrow, you'll be able to see that on my Facebook page because I would like to get everyone's input because we will need everyone to be uh, to gi- give their input on what they would like to see for this uh, for this site because this information needs to go on to Wilmington Housing Partnership because we do not want to, we want to make a decision. We don't want to hold anything up. We want to either say yea or nay when it comes to this building. And so I look forward to hearing from everyone. So um, tomorrow, look for my Facebook page and uh, check out when we're going to have that community meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. Councilwoman Fields?
Thank you, Council President. I just have a couple of things I want to read off. Um, Servium Girls Academy, um, they are doing, they are raising funds to renovate their gym. Um, and they are, um, they are being joined by Spark Impact Association and the United Way of Delaware um, and doing this. So they're asking everybody to mark their calendars um, for the twenty-four hour give, uh, Giving Challenge, March the fourth, March fourth and fifth to contribute. Um, and this is actually being sponsored by um the one organization that um, Councilman Johnson recognized, which is Do More Twenty-four. And this school is in um, council members Harley's District. And this school is in council members Harley's District. However, my daughter goes there. So, you know, we're all tied into this community together. And I think that's, that's one thing that I wanted to point out. We're all in this together as far as building the community. Also, I'm sorry, West Side Groves is doing their second annual tribute to Black Wall Street. It's the legacy of Black Wall Street, exploring the past, present, and the future. They're going to be at Milk and Honey Coffee Gallery at their, at the Union Street Store from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM on this Saturday. Let me see, one more. Hold on. And they're also, they're also distributing information about the Heat One Program that's sponsored by Unified Delaware. And I have one more thing. My little black known history fact for the Fifth District. August Courtly is an annual celebration to commemorate the 1813 founding of the Union Church of Africans, the first African-American church. For over 200 years, the events have been hosted by Mother African Union Church, which is incorporated in 18, which was incorporated in 1813 as the nation's first free black church. The church is located at 812 North Franklin Street in the Fifth District. It is led by the Reverend Dr. Ronald Whitaker II, who took over for a long time Pastor Reverend Livingston. August Courtly represents the nobility of African-American people, and it represents the African-American community centered around God, family, and freedom of religion. It is my honor to recognize August Courtly and Mother African Union Church during Black History Month. Thank you, Council President. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Field. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I have a few announcements to make. So, first, I want to encourage my council members and those in the city of Wilmington to continue to support our local businesses. They need our support. Green Box Kitchen opened its second location at 10th and Orange at Deco on Monday, February the 2nd. Deco has been opening, closing, well, they opened back up on Monday. So, I want to encourage everyone to come out and support those eateries at Deco. One of the learning pods in the Fourth District is at the Neighborhood House. So, for those that are listening that live in the Fourth District or anywhere in the city of Wilmington, one of the learning pods as far as being able to bring your children there during this time of COVID. The Neighborhood House in South Bridge is one of those locations. And please call to confirm vacancies. For COVID testing sites, I just want to remind everyone that you can go to NCCDE.org to find out weekly where COVID testing is taking place. And for those that need help with food during COVID-19, I'm not going to read off all the different locations and places you can go. I'm going to ask all our council members if we could put that flyer up on our Facebook page. There are numbers and contact information for school mill sites for your kids, where you can apply for SNAP benefits, where you can apply for WIC, and where you can apply for access to the food pantry and also senior meal boxes. All of that is on the flyer, the Food Bank flyer. So, I'm asking all the council members, I believe Council President sent that flyer out to all the council members, and it is some very good information on that flyer. And then, lastly, I want to mention that I think I heard Councilmember Cabrera mention COVID-19 vaccine shots and how different people have questions. For those that have questions regarding COVID-19 vaccinations, you can go to DE.gov/COVID/vaccine. You can call 1-833-643-1715. And then you can also email Vaccine@Delaware.gov. And again, these particular contact, this particular contact information is how to get your free COVID-19 vaccine. So, I just wanted to share that information. And lastly, I'm asking that our council members, that we continue to raise the bar of respect towards each other on the council floor. When council members are speaking, the community is watching and they are listening. And so, when we are speaking, you know, if there are, there, all council members have two opportunities to speak, so, and we have a certain amount of time. So, as we all are speaking, let's continue to raise the bar of respect. We said in 108, we wanted to raise the bar of respect as it relates to the community. And I'm just reminding everyone, let's respect one another when we're speaking. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harley. Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I have about three things. First, I would like to thank all the council members who came out and supported the Waltz Way project. But I would be remiss if I didn't announce that we had, thanks to Senator Darius Brown for helping out with that project, and the city of Wilmington really helped out, because we had ran out of money, and that's why that project, that corner, sat there so long. And the city of Wilmington came through and put the rest of that money up to complete that project. And I know Mr. Harry Walk and his wife, because she was persistent and kept calling and calling about having something on that corner for the ribbon cutting, because that's what her husband had asked in his last days, that he would like to see some houses there. And that was done. Rain, snow, sea to hell, it was done. I appreciate everyone for coming out, and WITN also. Then I would like to thank, I heard Maria say Chi. No, his name is Richard Knight, and they call him Chi-Chi. I think you call him Chuck or something, but his name is Chi. And he assisted with letting the young ladies use his building for their first clothing mobile van. And the van was really nice, and I really appreciate that. And tomorrow, we will, as Councilwoman Dixon said, we will be over to Reverend Weeks Church for their food and COVID shots tomorrow giveaway. And lastly, if anyone needs to have a COVID shot, they can walk in Northeast Social Service Center. I put out a flyer a long time ago, and you see the line out there. Northeast is open for free COVID shots from 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. On one side, it's the benefits, but on the other, on the other door, you just stand there, and the people literally walk in there like water. I've been over there before. It's not a long line. And Kingswood is open on Fridays from 8:00 to 4:00 in this hall. Anyone over there? So, and there's a lot of areas that people could get their COVID shots and vaccination shots as Harley said, if you, some of the information is out there. And with that being said, that will be all. Thanks a lot, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Darby. All right, we'll see if she checks back in. Councilwoman Gray.
Mr. President, first, I'd like to thank everyone for a good meeting this evening. Also, if anyone missed the Public Works Committee meeting this week run by Councilwoman Oliver, it was excellent. It was all about what is going to happen on I-95. And even though there was an excellent presentation, there are going to be continual updates and information available about closing of streets, changing of bus routes. And Councilwoman Oliver and the Chief of Staff are going to get these updates. And on my understanding, they're going to be given to all the council members, to be given out to the residents and constituents. So, if you have questions, contact us, and we may be able to answer them. But if you have a chance, you can rerun the committee meeting, Public Works Committee meeting of Wednesday yesterday, and it has a lot of information about I-95. Also, for the First District, I'm working on the renovation of Haynes Park. It has been kind of slow because of the storm damage in August, and that had to be taken care of. But that's been taken care of, and now we're trying to move forward and do something, replace all the playground equipment, which was, it was, it needed to be replaced before the storm, but the storm destroyed it totally. So, we're working on replacing all the playground equipment. The surface has to be replaced, the fence around the basketball court and the surface of the tennis court. So, definitely First District, I need your support. Get in touch with me. We've basically picked out what is going in the park, but of course, we need support to get the city to put the money in the budget. Okay, going forward after that, in the spirit of working together and having respect as Councilwoman Harley just brought up about on the floor, but I must also address this off the floor. There seems to be an elderly councilwoman that feels that insults are appropriate by email after the meeting. And if this continues, I'm going to put them on Facebook, because like Councilwoman Harley said, respect on the floor is essential for the public to see, but also respect in private. So, I thank everyone, and I congratulate for a good meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. And just before I give my comment, I do see, I do see that someone in the public has their hand raised, but at this time, again, we do not have public comment during petition and communications. So, I don't want you to think that we are ignoring you, but this is a time where the council members give their petitions and communications. And really quick, I just want to allow Councilmember Oliver, if she is still with us, just to clear up some comments you made on your, during your petition and communications. There was questions about, I believe you said there were several vaccinations sites in your district? Or is that all those testing sites?
I'm sorry, no, the COVID, the COVID testing site. I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Again, I want to thank everyone for another great meeting. I love the direction that this council is going, that we're moving to. I want to remind everyone that the budget is quickly approaching us. So, please circle back with your constituents and see what they want for their district, for your district, and we can make it happen. The budget process is a time where, that we control. So, if there's something that your community wants, we can put it in the budget. So, please realize the power that we have. This is, this is council's time to make things happen in our districts, in our community, in our city that our residents want to make happen. So, please don't let that opportunity pass you by. So, just, you know, we'll be having several conversations, one-on-one, with the whole budget process and some of the things that you're looking forward to incorporating in your district. I want to thank all of you who have already said that you will be a part of our food drive. We're going to have that on March 20th. So, many of you may have remembered that I really wanted us, I really want us to do something community-related at least once a month, that is not political, that we're just, we're just out in the community, giving back and showing that we are there for our community regardless of how we vote and regardless of our disagreements, that we're still here elected, and we're still here for our community. So, our first food drive is going to be on March 20th. We will have more details coming up very, very soon. I want to thank Mick from WITN, who gave us a great suggestion on not only supplying food, but also hand sanitizer and masks and other COVID-related supplies. Look forward to your continued suggestions, Council. And, you know, we can, I really want to do something every month. So, it can be citywide, it can, we can, I think we can really make an impact if we just kind of do things together at least once a month. I would also like to hear back from the, from our community, from our residents, for suggestions of what council can do as a group outside of council chambers, outside of the Zoom, where we can really just show our community that we are one council regardless of how voting goes. Again, I want to, I want to echo the importance of being tested. And if you are okay with being vaccinated, the importance of being vaccinated. And we definitely want to do a better job of making sure that we connect our community with those professionals who can give them vaccinations. So, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera for bringing that to our attention, and other council members who commented on it, that we really do have to be a stronger voice to make, to make sure that our seniors especially are getting vaccinated, if they are, if they do want, if they do want that. I think that might be it. Again, I really want to thank the community for your engagement this evening. Look forward to, you know, your continued support, your continued voice at our, at our meetings. I think, again, I think tonight was another, another good meeting. So, thank you, council members. Thank you, WITN staff. And thank you, staff on the ninth floor for another, another great night. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
A move.
All in favor, by, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Have a good evening.
And opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. Take care.
We all be safe.